Twenty twenty four. We're here for a regularly scheduled Taos Municipal Schools Board of Education meeting. It is approximately six oh five P M. I would like to go in and call this meeting to order. Adam, sir, can I please have a roll call?
President Flores.
Here.
Vice President Spray.
Here.
Secretary Trilio.
Here.
Board Member Concha.
Here.
Board Member King.
There. Hey, well, Dr. Lee.
So as part of our new traditions, we have a student from each of our campuses at our regular board meeting to recite the pledge and land acknowledgement statement. Tonight, we have Alyssa Brooks Salazar from Rancho's Elementary. She is a ten year old entering fifth grade. She was born and raised in Taos and has attended Rancho since kindergarten. She's a role model at her school and in the community and is an active member of her church. Her parents are Gerald Salazar and Naomi Rosales. Alyssa has a younger sister, Maria, entering third grade at R E S. Alyssa is an avid star student, received Tier One Attendance Awards for all four quarters and the principal's Mustang Award. She is a member of the ski club and participated in the science fair. She and her teammates are several basketball tournaments in third and fourth grade. Alyssa is the twenty twenty three rodeo the Taos Princess and represents the Taos rodeo at many events. She loves War H showing lambs, goats, and chickens. She plays the violin and loves to read. Her favorite subject in school is science. And in the future, she would like to attend Highlands University and wants to be a doctor or an astronaut. Please let us welcome Alyssa Brooks Salazar.
Land acknowledgement statement. It is respectful to recognize the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous people and their traditional territories. We acknowledge that we're on top, that we are on the historic land of the Red Willow people within the root in the territory of Taos Club. This acknowledgement will apply as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to respectfully recognize, honor, and to tile and partner with the Red Willow people. With land and water, we benefit from this great landscape.
And I look forward to hearing what kind of doctor you are to become or astronaut.
Yes, on behalf of the school board, we want to thank Miss Alyssa and her parents and all those who came to support her tonight. It's a big treat to get our students out here and participate in the school board meeting. Very nice to see all of her accomplishments and achievements. And as a, as a board and as president of the board, very proud of you, Miss Alyssa, and keep on, keep on shooting for the stars. With that, we'll move on forward to item E, which is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any proposed amendments or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. A second, I have a second from Board Member King. You come with a role member.
Board Member Concha.
Yes.
Board Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Trilio.
Yes.
Vice President Spray.
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is item F, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Wishing to speak right public comment.
I saw that comment that I didn't realize cell phones was going to be a public hearing. You want me just to wait until then? My comments are best.
We're gonna, we're gonna move right into the public, the public hearing, so you're more than welcome to speak then if you so choose. I mean, if you do plan to speak, Mr. Hall, we do need you to sign the public comment. Okay, I'm hearing, we're having no one present to speak during public comment. We will go ahead and move to item G, which is a public hearing on proposed Taos Municipal School District Policy, J I C J, Student Use of Cell Phones and Other Electronic Communications. Real quick, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the provisions of public comment. Any interested person may submit data of user arguments and write into the board on any school-related topic by submitting their comments to Executive Secretary Anna Rial. An individual or representative wishing to give public comments shall register prior to participating in public comment. Additionally, when registering for public comment, the speaker shall be required to identify themselves, the subject matter of their proposed comment when they register. Speakers are allotted three minutes or an amount otherwise designated by the board president at the beginning of the meeting. The board president in his or her sole discretion may shorten, lengthen the comment period time to ensure that the meeting is efficiently and properly conducted. All speakers are required to abide by all time limitations. Speakers are strongly encouraged to avoid personal attacks, utilize all administrative avenues for complaint resolution before bringing issues to the board and to avoid identifying students in comments and to present all comments professionally and respectfully. If you are an individual with a disability who is in need of a reader amplifier, qualified sign language interpreter, or any other form of auxiliary aid or service to attend or participate in the hearing or meeting, please contact the superintendent's office at least one week prior to the meeting or as soon as possible. So at this time, I will make a motion to enter into a public hearing.
Second.
We have a second from Vice President Cynthia. I'm pretty popular role.
Yes. Board Member Concha.
Yes.
Board Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Trilio.
Yes.
Vice President Spray.
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes. Mr. Dory, I wish you to speak. Public comment.
Yeah. I didn't realize this topic was on the interview. I hadn't seen the agenda just now. I think Lady Bill, I listened to a broadcast on a program called Big Picture of Science. It was on the fifth of August, and it was tied to social media, hardening our children. There were three participants along with the host. The first was a high school student who wrote a column describing positive and negative effects of social media for her company, for her community, based on Long Island, New York. The first interview was with Zach Roush, who was a research scientist. Did the work for, research for psychologists, Jonathan, who wrote the book. The Anxious Generation had a great rewiring of childhood that caused an epidemic of mental illness. And the third person, he was, he spoke in favor of changes. The third person they interviewed was a university psychologist, Sarah Coin, and she didn't seem to think there was much of a problem in their career to do appropriate research. They spoke a bit about tech company applications without responsibilities from on top. The fact that tech companies are interested essentially in maximizing engagement, they just want clicks. They want interest, they want to hold your attention, they want to create an addition quite frankly, as I believe. He spoke about changing an orange from the bottom up as well from the top down. He said, what kind of relationship, he's asking these questions about ourselves. What kind of relationship did we want, what's your child would look like, what we wanted to look like, what we want to look like? And instead, we've got the tech companies choose for us. Now, I'm not someone with a child at school, but I'm really quite concerned about social media. He said, the presenter or the host spoke about the fact that solutions were presented to groups and not just individuals. And Zach Roush replied, quote, and I want to get that even harder. Is the key point of the book that kids and parents are trapped in a collective action problem, stuff in a social trap, end quotes, question of getting together as a group to address the problem. He referred to a study done recently where children, and I remember the ages, you could probably find the report. He said, how much, they were asked, how much money could take them to get off Instagram or TikTok for a month, it's a fifty dollar. They asked the same question, but added, quote, what else about everyone else in your community on your campus should also get off, end quote. Who made response, well, actually, we'll pay you. That is the response from the, you know, the citizens, children. They're on application, but everyone else is, yeah, yeah, they're not, and I'm always finished, they're not enjoying the experience because everyone else is. He said, quote, so any thirteen year old who says, I'm not gonna go on Instagram, it's cheating, they have a social life of isolation. There are, there's a question of potential isolation. He said, quote, everything that we suggest, we need to do this as a group. We need to do this together, and if we do this, it's gonna be a real need, end quote. Four norms proposed, four big reforms. One, no smartphones until high school. I agree with every one of these. It's done as a group, maybe five families, maybe the school, community, no social media until sixteen. Second, third, phone-free schools, bell to bell, phone lockers in houses. And the host said, I'll add a fifth. And I'm, I'm sorry, fourth was much more free play, independence, responsibility, and legal, that's all a quote. The host then said, I'll add a fifth, bring back the board game. And he went on to say, yeah, bring back summer champs, run around, take risks, play. And I'll finish up my second, the individual who spoke rather skeptically proposing a solution, didn't really supply the solution, telling him more education, that's fine, yes, education is necessary. But it seems to me a little oversight, a little regulation, which also gets considered. And myself, I'm gonna ask why it's the vice over the campus. Why, why are those kids allowed to come and go as they please? As I guess juniors and seniors would so good to speak, but no from, you know, whoever. I think, I think we should go to school where the kids wanna stay there and should be there and should feel comfortable there.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for taking the time to provide us with your insight in your public comment. Are there any other individuals wishing to speak on the proposed Taos Municipal School District Policy, Student Use of Cell Phones and Other Electronic Communications? Do we have anybody online, like Chad? No. So at this time, I will go ahead and make a motion to close our public hearing on the proposed Taos Municipal School District Policy, J I C J.
Second.
We have a second from Vice President Cynthia. I'm pretty, please call for the role.
Board Member Concha.
Yes.
Board Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Trilio.
Yes.
Vice President Spray.
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes. Item H, new business, new policy and revision of existing policies. During discussion of a policy proposal, the views of the public, staff members, and the board may result in changes to the draft proposal. A change shall not require that the policy go through an additional review except if the board determines that the change requires further study and then an additional review would be desirable. The board procedure is to present a new policy or revision of an existing policy at two meetings. However, policies may be adopted or amended at a single first meeting of the board if declared necessary by a majority of the board. Item H A is the first meeting presentation, discussion, and possible approval if determined necessary by the board of newborn policy, J I C J, Student Use of Cell Phones and Other Electronic Communications. If it's okay with the board, it's kind of been a historical practice to read the policy aloud, is that something the board feels I should do or is it necessary? And then a legal setting would exactly necessarily.
So what your policy calls for is a first meeting at which it's discussed. So if you feel like it would be useful to have it read aloud, then invite comment and discussion, that's fine, but if the board feels because it's had a chance to look at it, that maybe a summary presentation perhaps by Dr. Raiden is more efficient, it really is up to you. I'm fine with not coming in red if it's legal.
Okay, so at this point in time, I will put in turn it over for a brief summary by our superintendent, Dr. Sun Goo Lin.
Okay, President Flores, members of the board. One of three presentations, so when I came on board, part of my plan, my new plan was to be out of the community and to listen to our staff and the students to get some feedback. And part of that feedback was, of course, to improve our scores, but also on implementing a cellphone policy to help improve those scores and increase student engagement. Having said that, in July of fifteenth, we went right ahead and sent out as a district a survey that went out through text message, email, social media, website. We sent it out for a week, in part to get the community feedback on the thoughts from our parents and our students and our staff on a new cellphone policy. And again, this is coming back, I'm responding from all the community meetings and the feedback that I received. So we did receive over a thousand respondents to our survey, and each board member does have a copy of the survey. Having said that, of all the ten questions, the three that kind of stood out was of the thousand respondents, seventy percent are parents. Most of them from the high school, a lot from the middle school. But a lot of the response back was that they understood that cell phones were a distraction in the classroom. They don't feel that they should be in schools. But also, they were kind of like, the response was, please don't take it away from my child, right? So how do we mitigate that, right? How do we, how do we balance that, because that is the current policy? So we brought together our campus and district leadership. We reviewed the data, we reviewed the current policies or practices that we have in place at the different campuses. And through that, we recommend and propose that as a district, we start with cellphone pouches. And this would be at the secondary level. So students would be able to receive a district pouch to no cost to them. We would be buying them for them. And their expectation would be to place their phones in magnetically sealed pouch. And they would keep that during the school day. At the very end of the day, there would be locations to unlock the cellphone. I do have a display here just so that you could see. That would be proposing. Now, just to be clear, it's not a standard for each school. This is just a mockup of what they would be at the school sites in different areas. Of course, it would be locked and making sure that they were placed screwed on to the walls in key locations. Our director, safety, security, will be out there with the principals to find those key areas, the high traffic areas. Students at the end of the day would come to those locations and simply unlock their pouches and take out their cell phones. Now, these pouches are for the students, so they don't have to turn them in to anybody. This is for them. We would have a district logo, and it would be, again, at no cost to the families. The only cost that potential could be is if they were lost or stolen. There we go, so it'd be locked and magnetically sealed. Students to comply with the data that we did receive back, that they want to hold it, they want them, please don't take it away. Well, students are in possession of this at all times. So we do not hold it as a gift, right? They go on to it, but at the end of the day, they get their phone back. I'm sorry, they get to the unlocked stations and they can take out their phones and take it with them. Now, having said that, we'll be placing these at key locations around the campus sites. We do understand that maybe if a student forgets to unlock it and they go home, we are gonna have an unlocking station outside the administration building so that they can unlock it in case they forget. We also wanted to take into consideration that we understand that a couple of years ago through COVID, we asked all our students, right? Go online completely. So we're changing the habits so we can increase student engagement, both academically and socially. This, we believe, will help improve our scores, again, receiving feedback from the community. At the very end of this, the, the, we also wanted to consider our teacher autonomy. Right? What if teachers do want to utilize cell phones for instructional purposes? Well, they're gonna be able to provide a request form to their principal or supervisor to utilize the cell phones within the classroom, but it has to be tied to lesson plans. It has to be tied to instruction, student outcomes. So once approved by their supervisor, they will be receiving a portable unlocking device to take into their classroom for the day. They'll be able to utilize it within instruction for, you know, instructional purposes and responsible use. At the end of the day, teacher then returns back the unlocking device to the area that they received it from. So we wanted to continue that autonomy that teachers may have with incorporating technology within their lessons. Well, one thing I do want to emphasize, we are not banning cell phones. We're not, all we're doing is finding phone-free schools. And so all our students do have a one-to-one device, they have a Chromebook. So communication with parents will still continue through emails. So if a parent wants to email their child throughout the day, they still can. We're gonna start working towards educating our families as well as our students, how to use calendars. For example, early dismissal dates for events that they need to go to and reminders. So we're not creating a ban, we're just creating phone-free zones, and we're also not stopping the communication to our parents. Our classrooms have, every classroom has a landline, so they are, can reach to their students or their kids through the office of the campus. And then the office will then either transfer or leave a message to the teacher for the classroom. We believe as a district and campus that this will help improve student engagement in the classroom. And we also believe it will improve our students socially when it comes to being able to interact with each other. We ran some numbers and we found out that for every minute of every period of the school year that a teacher has to address a cellphone, our schools were losing about three days of instruction. So we're also hoping to regain that instruction back into the classroom to help again increase student engagement. And by a lot of this policy, if approved, we will have a timeline in, in which to implement. So we all know school starts next week on Monday. So the students and the staff would have about three weeks to get ready and prepared for the implementation that our hopes are to implement September, the day after, the day after Labor Day. And so we redo, we do really feel that there's a need to have a review at a one-time, only because we do have a timeline that school started, and we want to see how quickly we can implement this cellphone policy.
So it is the request of the superintendent at the board does recognize the need for this policy. And it is the superintendent's request that we move forward with an adoption of the policy. I mean, as an act of transparency, and it's kind of called me as a creature of habit, historically, I've read the policy, so I'm gonna take some time just to briefly read it for those that want to maybe come back and view the meeting online, or for those that aren't aware of what the policy looks like. But we should just hear it, so I'll be pretty quick on this. So, policy J I C J, Student Use of Cell Phones and Other Electronic Communication Devices states, "The board recognizes that many students possess cell phones and other electronic communication devices. The purpose of this policy is to help create a positive and productive learning environment for all students and staff. An electronic communication device is a device that uses electronic signals to create, transmit, and receive information between two or more persons or a communication from or to a person. This includes but is not limited to an electronic watch. Any use of cell phones and other electronic communication devices that violates board policy, regulation, or school rule is strictly prohibited and may result in confiscation of the device and/or further disciplinary action as outlined below. The district shall not be responsible for the loss, theft, or damage to cell phones or other electronic communication devices that students bring with them to school or school activities or use on school transportation. Condu would prohibit it. Cell phones and other electronic communication devices may not be used in any manner that disrupts the instructional process or violates board policies or regulation. With the exception of district issued devices or authorized use of an assistive technology device under an individualized education program known as an I E P or Section five oh four plan of a student with a disability, students are not allowed to use cell phones or other electronic communication devices during the instructional day. This includes but is not limited to texting, calling, browsing, gaming, social media, or any other activity that involves the use of a cellphone or other electronic communication device on school grounds. The instructional day is considered the beginning and end of the school day. Procedures, prior to the beginning of the instructional day, all students are to turn off their cell phones and other electronic communication devices prohibited by this policy for use during the instructional day. Students may turn their devices back on at the end of the instructional day. Items which are used to disrupt or interfere with the educational process may be seized by authorized persons as set forth in this policy. Seized items shall be released to appropriate authorities or a student's parent or guardian or returned to the student when and if the administrative authority deems appropriate as set, as set forth in this policy." So we have some guidelines here for sixth through twelfth grade. If a student brings their cellphone or any other electronic communication device to school, students are to turn off, store, and lock their devices inside the district-issued pouch for the duration of the instructional day. If any electronic communication device is too large to fit in the pouch, students ensure that they are not visible or accessible. Students may be allowed to use cell phones in the classroom for instructional purposes aligned to curriculum only after the instructor has received prior written approval from their immediate supervisor or campus administrator. Students and parents, students and parents, guardians will incur a replacement cost for any lost or stolen district-issued pouches. Elementary, pre-K through fifth grade. If students bring their cell phones or other electronic communication devices to school, students are to turn them off or silence them. Cell phones or other electronic communication devices must not be visible or accessible. Students may be allowed to use cell phones in the classroom for instructional purposes aligned to curriculum only after the instructor has received prior written approval from their immediate supervisor or campus administrator. And within the policy here, there are a a set of violations and some disciplinary process that follows them, I will not go into detail on those. There's a first, second, third violation, a fourth, fifth, and a sixth, so obviously there will be given many chances, but the policy does outline the violations that will be incurred in the disciplinary process that will follow.
Vice President, if I may.
Yes.
We, the reason we took that approach is we wanted to take a progressive discipline approach instead of making it punitive right away.
And then just to also add here as part of the parent communication with your child, parents may call the school office, phones. If there is an emergency and a need to reach their child, the office staff will relay the message to the student or teacher as soon as possible. So that is the policy that is set before us for consideration and discussion is, at this time, is there any board discussion regards to the policy?
Sure, I am approved. You said it would be implemented on after Labor Day. And I, my question is, how, how much time is it gonna take for all the students to be able to lock and unlock at the beginning and the end every day, like I'll be talking like lines or you know, just the time, the amount of time it's gonna take for them to get from their lock station to their classrooms?
Appreciate that, Member Concha, and just so that these are district-issued pouches that the students get to keep with them, just like the laptops. And so this is with, from the moment one week distributing. So in the morning, as they come to school, you know, they can lock them in the car before they get or on the way to class or as soon as they enter, it'll be up to them. Or as soon as they enter, it'll be up to them. The unlocking stations, if we're, we're gonna be proposing to purchase, uh, about a hundred of these. And so it would be a key entry points and exit points within the schools. So that way, there isn't a funnel of students who are waiting in line just to unlock it. And just so I can show you again, just it's to unlock it was as quick as that. And that's it.
Okay.
And they walk through, they, they keep these, they don't have to turn them into anything.
So how, how do we know they lock them?
So that's the power where.
The honor system.
Well, so through our first period classes. We're able to check to make sure, we will also have our security, uh, at the very front of the schools as well to make sure that they, uh, do unlock it. Of course, that's why we have a progressive discipline, just in case they don't follow the policies.
Or Member King?
Yeah, should we encourage them not to even bring it? I mean, it, it's, uh. I, I liked the idea of the pouch, but you know, if it's not gonna be used. Uh, obviously, if the kids have extracurricular activity, meaning the sports, something after school, they need a ride, they can let their parents know. But, you know. Uh, it's one of those culture things, you know. Maybe just leave your phone at home, um, obviously, when we all went to school. If, if you had, uh, went to the office and we all made it, you know, we're all here. Uh, so I just think it's one of those things we encourage the students, you know, leave it at home. It's gonna be, it'll be helpful for, you know, everyone.
Absolutely, and that's actually one of the options we had considered, which is part of a total ban. But again, being part of the transparency and the data. We were trying to make sure when we discussed the options, the mitigation between not having in, uh, interruptions in the class. Uh, understanding that they really shouldn't have them. But our parents also wanting the information or the respondents, I should say. Please don't take it away from my chat, and so policing the ban would also start the interruption. So we considered all those options and we're, we're trying to do, most of them is to mitigate. Uh, the data that came back from our respondents, and so, uh, uh, we also understand, remember, we, again, for two years, we did tell our, our whole community. Please make sure to use everything online, and we can't move forward just completely, there's a way of transition. Yes, man?
I'm, thank you, Susan Paulson. Those lot unlocking stations, do they only get turned on after school, like, they can't unlock during the day, is that correct?
That is correct, so they're magnetic, so they don't have any power.
Right.
The case will be locked through a lot of.
Oh, I see. And so. Some of them physically unlocked.
Physically unlocked, yes.
Thank you.
Secretary, you know, then, or Mayor Quiche?
Oh. Superintendent Dr. Um, Leighton and I, and, um, Member Key. Um, attended the, um. Um, the digital science presentation that was done on Thursday. And it was what an eye-opener it was. And, uh, it just really confirmed what it is that this board is undertaking. Um, I believe that, uh, that we are, we will be the first, uh, district in the state. To implement this. Uh, a policy, a cellphone policy. And, uh, actually, P D was there that day, uh, represented. And, uh, but with the notes, I, I, I took notes. But it was amazing, one of the things that, uh. The impact that it will have on students is that. The test scores. The six, there was a six percent increase. And, and just between an A, a B, and an A. You know, the, the, um, the dopamine hits. That even if you have, even of the kids, will take, will open up their cell phones even in the morning, on the way to school. That dopamine, uh, they'll have to get a dopamine hit, and it's just like something that ignites their brain to where. They want to be on that phone. And, and if they're not allowed. It, it makes a huge difference because then they can't engage in learning. Otherwise, it's in their brain. And, um, again, the, the statistics, depression, suicide, insomnia, addictions. Um, it, it was just amazing that the test scores, um. Let me see what else I, I saw here. Um, again, but it, it's gonna take a buy-in from the parents. And I believe that, uh, this group is going to have, um, other sessions. And they're gonna include the parents because the, the parents have to buy in into this. This type of, uh, behavioral change for, for students. And, and for parents too, and for the home environment, it, I think it's gonna be all the way around, but, um. Uh, it's a change in habit from the kids to parents. Um, but we have to remember that phones are not a learning device, they're a communication device. Um, again, um. Oh, and then they, they also talked about, about, um, what is available in our community to be able to lock down. A lot of this, the social media that is in our, uh, televisions and in our. In our tablets and in our phones. And I believe that R E A has, uh, I believe his name is not David Trivia. And I don't know how to contact him, but it would be interesting to have maybe a presentation. Um, uh, made available to us to be able to. To see exactly what, what they have in mind as far as, or what parents can do, or what it is that, um, we can change. In our homes to be able to, to change the, the behavior, but also change. The, the culture and the environment of, of who we've been these last few years. And so to me, I thought it was so interesting, and I'm so glad that I attended, but again, it's, uh, uh. It's a complex change. From vision to skills to incentives to resources to action plans, everything has to, to come into fruition, we're going to see, um, feedback from our, uh. From, we'll probably be measuring the feedback that we get from, from this endeavor, but I think it's, um. Um, when we see what, uh, how valuable are our students? And the critical thinking that will evolve just from taking this action as a board. Because we talk about our children, uh, being important while their minds are important. The, um, also the, the damage that is being done because their brains continue to develop until they're twenty-five. And so when you think of what, what they're engaging in. And, and what is happening in their, in the, the development of their brains, it's serious, I would think. So again, it was very interesting to, to attend and, uh, we'll just, I'm sure that they'll let us know when, uh. When we're going to, uh, get another presentation, but I think it would be really, uh, wise to, to be able to, uh. Um, see what R E A has. It, I mean, again, they, they brought that out and see what, what they might do to really, uh, assist us in. In just informing the public, or I would wanna know what it is, how, how it is I can have those control devices, I have a certain ones. But there's so much more, they talked about the algorithms, and it's, it's amazing, and they talked about A I. They, it, it was from nine to three, but it was ongoing. It were right through lunch, it was incredible, and, uh, so again. I, it was my privilege to attend, but I would say that, um, um, Dr. Leighton was in his attendance. It was, um. It just, everything that we're doing just complimented, I believe, what, what they're talking about, and they were just. Ecstatic, really, about having, about what the board is doing and what the district is doing, not just the board, but the district is doing. And, uh, in wanting to implement such a. Uh, the cellphone policy to start with, let's, you know, it's a start.
President Paulson, if I may, just to expand, um, we're also understanding that if we want, if the policy's approved. You know, this is just during the school day, right, so once the students leave, I think to, uh, Member King's point. Our students will be able to be on the phones again, right, and either in the evening or over the weekend or during our breaks. So we are going to bring in the digital citizenship component so that we can, uh, educate our students. On the appropriateness of using cell phones, so that when they are not in our burden. They understand the importance of social media and how to and not to utilize it. So we are going to incorporate that educational aspect to our students. Because for obvious reasons, when they're home, at, at that point, it's between the families of how to use it. But we do wanna, we are going to bring in that digital citizenship. So that we can educate our kids on the appropriateness of cellphone usage.
What did you call it?
Digital citizenship?
Digital.
What, Member Quiche, I have, yeah, I'm actually there, but.
Um, my, um, question is in reference to the data, um, how are we going to collect the data? Uh, you know, to measure as far as effectiveness and efficiency in regards to the resources and, and that we're gonna be putting into this, the time and. Everything like that, I know you mentioned that we'll probably, we could potentially get back three days of instructional time. Um, and maybe we may see an improvement in grades, but just based on the, um, how long are we gonna collect the data? How are we going to collect it, and, um, if approved, are we approving a policy or a pilot initiative?
So, Member Quiche, that's a great question, uh, I'll answer that in twofold, so. The scores throughout the year, we will be able to evaluate to show improvement or not, right? And of course, we know it's not just from the cellphone policy, but it will be also the interest structure, but. Um, we also have all those of which company we would like to purchase this from, and part of that agreement is to provide ongoing resultant data. Throughout the year to show improvements or usage and quantify, quantify the data that shows that this policy is taking a positive effect. And we, once that data is collected through that operation with the company, we'll be providing that back to our board for presentations.
Okay, so we're looking at a whole school, the remainder of this.
That is correct, there's.
Probably filming to shoot this stuff. Okay, and then again, like I asked, are we looking to? So say you get the data back and everything, you know, there doesn't show a, a great, you know, distinction between the effectiveness or not. Um, as you said, you're giving other improvements in other areas of just to determine what the cellphone use policy has. Um, how effective it's been, and say you decide it's not very effective. But there's policy things, would we approve now for a permanent policy, would we approve for a pilot, or would you change that policy at the end of the school?
So at the end of the school year, we would be able to revise, uh, policy or propose revisions to the policy. And just like the process that we've followed here, we will be able to make those proposed changes based on data and collection of data and survey responses and. Uh, we would definitely have to do that, but it would be the same process, any revisions to the policies will go through to this component. And I'm, I'm looking forward to the end of the year to see, uh, what is, cause of all the research that we've looked into. Indicates a positive improvement for students both academically and socially. There was reduced bullying, online bullying, there was reduced fights as a result of it. So we're, we're hoping to bring that to the table once we do collect that information.
Thank you.
Or Member King?
Yeah, just, uh. In regards to helping Board Member Quiche, when we had our leadership conference, I know I was a conflictly scheduled with the panel, but, uh. Data says, I think it's three years before we can really see effective change. So almost our term on the board before we can see tangible results, just to help you. Uh, I know, uh, in society, big district, uh, s- school districts in L A, New York. Uh, even where my, uh, family lives, uh. I talked to my sister last weekend and she said, uh, this school district, Lee Summit, has never allowed for school, uh, cell phones, and that school is. You know, I would say, uh, equivalent to Taos far as economics. And it, it's, uh, I think we solve a lot with just letting the kids be there in the presence, I mean. These things are, you know, like, I think we teach the parents too. We, I, the kids, you know, are the kids, but the parents, you know, it's by, uh, it's not what we say, it's what we do. And, you know, an hour before bed, all electronics should be off, and, uh, but, you know, I guarantee if you had a little camera in the house. You would see the parent on the phone, so, you know, uh, kids emulate what they see.
One more, if I may, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You know, I have, since, since this, um, whole survey and everything, just we got back the results and everything. Have we heard, um, of any new, like, proposals on solutions or alternatives or propositions, um, from anyone on? Um, just anything different that they might propose that would work, um, outside of this?
So, thank you for asking that, Member Quiche, that was actually part of the discussions, uh, through the campus and district leadership. What other options can we look at, I mean, there was, uh, shoe pouches that are used at the doors. But again, that means that a teacher now every period has to address the cellphone component, so we would not be regaining those lost instruction time. We also looked at, uh, I believe it was those lockers, home lockers. Uh, the cost is quite a bit, uh, just about ten alone could be about equal to the proposed price that we have here as opposed to for every student. Uh, for sixteen hundred and fifty of these pouches. Uh, we also thought about, does our existing policy just need to be revamped? But the consensus was again that it's because we're here that the existing policy is not working. So we did look at different options, uh, I do know that, going back to, uh, Secretary through heels comment. We may be the only public school in New Mexico to institute such a policy. Uh, there are private schools, charter schools that have implemented, uh, as of a year and a half ago, with positive results as well. Thank you, yes, it was part of the discussions, do, do we, we wanna look at every avenue before we make a, a final proposal.
Um, so my thoughts on this are, um, and, you know, senior firsthand, uh, with use of cell phones within my own home, I have two young children that are. Are now young adults, and, um, I remember when I bought my youngest daughter her first phone because she wanted a phone, uh, after doing that, I. Kind of thought, did I do the right thing before her, you know, and, uh, after that, um. Trying to get that phone away from her, uh, with always an argument and a fight at home, and, um. I, I see the distraction, you know, when, uh, just from experience, you know, you go to eat dinner with your family sometimes and your kids pulling out their phone and, you know, you. There's not the social interaction, how was your day-to-day, uh, stuff? Uh, you know, how are you feeling, their kids are glued to their phone, even adults you find, um, are glued to their phone. Um, as a working, uh, man, you know, you go to work and, uh, your supervisors, me as a supervisor. Uh, you expect your employees to be at work at their workstation, doing their work, you, you know, I don't think that, uh, it would be proper professional. Or, uh, to walk into either your employee's office or, uh, find your employee holding a shovel and staring at their phone at the same time, right? Or trying to do work on the computer and staring at their phone, so I think by trying to, uh, positively affect behavior within our students. Um, at this level and within this classroom, uh, will reverberate into their adult. Um, into them, you know, going into adults and teaching them that, you know, that you don't need your phone all the time. Um, you know, I'll be honest, uh, I find myself sometimes. When I would say glued to my phone and then, thank goodness, I have, uh, extracurricular activities such as, uh, ranching that I do, and I'll find where like I'm outside working all day long. Picking up hay or doing various things and not one time did I look at my phone, might have looked at my watch. But when you're busy doing constructive things and you've learned it. You learn that you don't need to be on your phone, that your phone isn't, um. Everything, and I think right now with society and, uh, the development of the phone. Our kids have become glued to it, it's almost an extension of their hand, it's an addiction, um, it disrupts the classroom. Um, you know, they, it distracts them. They're not focused, and I think a lot of. That we see in our, uh, school grades or, uh. Our statistics, um, that we see on performance. And it doesn't hurt to try new things, um, I, I don't think that, uh. Your, the student being away from their cellphone while they're at school. While they're in the classroom is gonna negatively impact them, I, I believe that initially there's gonna be some pushback. There's gonna be, um, some behavior changes or we'll probably see quite a bit, few infractions. Initially, but as we, if we stay the course, like with anything, in life, uh, when you do something for positive. Initially, but as we, if we stay the course like with anything in life, uh, when you do something for positive. Means that there's a, if there's something positive behind it, if you're, what you're trying to implement is to affect positive change and. It's for the greater good. I see no harm in in moving forward with that. Um. We do control the environment as a district, as a school board. It's our duty as elected officials to. Make decisions, even if they're not. Um. Fancy by everybody, but the decision we make are for the benefit of our students, uh, the benefit of uh. The greater good, positive outcomes, higher test scores, um, learning achievement. You know, good behavioral patterns and I. One question I have, I guess, you know, is my only concern would be in the event of an emergency. And you have to evacuate the classrooms, would there be um? Like security personnel or administrative staff who might have a portable one of those items in their pockets so that they would be able to. You know, maybe disengage the students' phones at a certain time after, or God forbid, there's a. Active shooter in the school or uh, a fire emergency. Um, what is our uh? Avenue of uh, taking taking that on.
So I'm glad that that's an excellent question, cause that is one that was in in deep discussion. Cause we're all parents and and we all have family members or guardians of someone that's a loved one, then again, there there is a lockdown scenario. Our first priority is to ensure the safety of the kids. You know, getting into a locked area with an adult. Um, and so having said that, uh, research has also shown through law enforcement that. By having a system such as this in place, we do, the nine one one lines do not get flooded. And uh, clear communication goes out as to where the situation is occurring. So instead of, I think they're on the north side or on the west side or the east side, whatever the case may be, they get clear information and are able to neutralize the situation. Uh, so having to be portable, we've already been in discussion as well with uh, supervisory maintenance. In creating portable areas where specifically we can place these on a post. Portable wise, because if we have to do that quite quickly, there's gonna be areas where we have to pick up centralized locations. And those areas will be where they could pick up. Now, communication wise, I mean, going back to the cell, uh, the phones at the hard lines. Uh, our teachers will be able to provide that communication output, but. Are providing a clear pathway for the nine one one lines, neutralize the situation. And as a district, we then now provide the utmost updated and current information that is correct as opposed to trying to mitigate. Uh, what is correct and what is not correct, what is rumored, what is not.
Would it be, what has it been thought of? Um. Let's say it, does the student body is evacuated to the football field because there's a gas uh, smell building. And until the fire department goes in and checks everything and clears everything, you know, of course, not allowed back into the building. Um. Would it, in my mind is thinking, would it be easier if? Principal and or assistant principal or head of security have one of those that's not mounted to a wall. In their desk or somewhere where they could grab it easily. All the kids are evacuated at the football field. No staff or students are allowed back in the school. How do you then? Unlock all the cell phones if you, you don't wanna be carrying a post to put or how.
Well, so there's, there's twofold, right? These, these are small devices, so they can be carried by our administrators. But we would also have these portable on posts specifically, so that we can find other items, cause then if we only have one or two people. Then that line forms that we're talking about, but we will be ordering sufficient, sufficient of these enough and they're small and portable. In uh, to be able to carry along with us.
Some something else that uh, I've thought about it through these processes. By restricting our students' use of cell phones during the classroom and school day, you know, we're we're increasing their focus on learning. And curriculum, uh, many times I'm sure a teacher could say, you know, kids, let's get through this lesson. Let's uh, which obviously through the, through the approval here, um, maybe there's times where cell phone usage could be. Uh, reward of sorts, not not always, I'm not saying that we're gonna commit that, but. Um, you know, maybe if you, if the students are doing while you take them to the football field and they could use their phones over there for a short period of time and get back in the class. But then again, going back to the conversation with board member Tru Hill though, they just looking at your phone changes the whole. Concept, so we wanna kind of curb their behavior and um.
I think what research has shown, uh, President Flores, if I may, that once students learn to change those habits. The habit of wanting to get to it, you know, the quick uh, fear of missing out starts to lessen over time and they realize. They don't need their phone for every single minute of the day. They, and again, doing that with our uh, digital citizenship education. Learning how to use it responsibly. And so, so hope is through time, our students will learn that it's not a, I have to have it right now.
Right, President Flores, they might actually talk to another student or look at a cloud if.
Yeah, I believe that instead of, so look at the clouds exactly. Um, I I.
Yeah, I believe uh, faith in the process. I think you hear that in. Uh, organizations, I hate to lean on sports, but there's a process and it's for us. Uh, and it's gonna be tough. I mean, change, MBO is tough, but I believe that. We, as superintendent, Aiden has said, the data is there. And the uh, I said the digital and two kids one. Uh. In regards board member trio, said she, and the speaker was fantastic. Uh, I talked to Sandy Campbell, the executive director. I wasn't able to attend the whole session for uh, business purposes, but. It's, it's there, guys. You guys know the kid, young kids, they can't even talk to you anymore. It's really sad. Our society is like. Oh, my goodness. They look at you. It's almost like when the kids, when TV started in the sixties. Where all you had to do is look at the TV. There was no interaction. And once again, uh. Going outside, looking at the mountains, we live in a beautiful community. Uh, maybe they go out and walk. A walk in the courtroom area, uh, uh, courtyard, walk around the school. Uh, I think it's. I think it's a, it's a theme that it's gonna be hard. I think this year we're gonna hear a lot of complaints, but the data is there. It's given that. So that three year timeframe and um, once again, the kids will come back and thank us. For what we changed their lives, cause uh, we know if you go up to the ski valley for a day. For an hour, it changes your whole outlook. You come back to town and you're just like. It's like you've gone to church and it's a beautiful thing and we, we live in a beautiful area. So I believe the kids, uh, you know. They're connected to other places, but there's nothing like family. And once again, President Mark. You sit around and we used to do that. How was your day? What did you do? Now it's like, you know, our. One of the rules in our family, we do not bring your phone to the table, dinner table, cause you, you don't talk.
Thank you. Um, just, you know, devil's advocate here on the end. Um. In just all my work with youth and even with parents, you know, like you. We want everybody's best interest and feedback as well. And so we tend to wanna be able to pick our battles, right? And so I'm wondering, do we have other concerns or issues that we're overlooking? Like, is this take precedent? Is this our most pressing issue that we're focusing on right now? Or is there something else that we should be? Looking at and addressing that's essentially more important than a self abuse policy. That's just my first kind of. Question. And then secondly, um, for all of our students that are um, excelling and thriving, um. Is is this gonna be sort of a punitive punishment towards them, you know, for all of their achievements? Um. How are we giving back and showing them or proving them, convincing them that this is the best practice for them, you know, um. Things like that. And um, basically like, what's the exchange, you know, like? I know, I know as children, you know, they're they're, they shouldn't be granted that, but there's that concept of instant gratification, you know, so. We do this for you, we do this for you, you know, on some type of an exchange and um. Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking anything that's more dire than self belief.
So I can, and I'll address the first one, I remember much of, thank you for asking. So other items addressed, this is actually just one of the many, many layers. And we're actually going to be uh, presenting that today as part of the superintendent's report. And then our uh, presentation by uh, associate superintendent, I'm gonna go on, or some of the other layers that we're coupling this with. This is just one avenue, but we have to consider different layers. So this is just one layer of it. But uh, if I may, kind of, you learn a little bit once the presentation, you'll see how. As a district and a campus, uh, leadership has gotten together through retreats to discuss data, how we're gonna improve it. What are we gonna do on a consistent basis? So, and actually, if I may, that's part of why uh, each board member here has a book in front of them. So I can, in the future presentation, uh, be able to speak to that. Uh, as far as punitive for thriving. Uh, there could be discussions at the, at some point during the school year, how if we want to incentivize it, but we'll have to gauge. By student feedback and our campus leaders, how is it going? Cause we may find out and research to show that. Students actually start to accept this and it becomes part of the natural culture of the campus where it's not seen as punitive in nature, but. More so regaining that instruction. So we can revisit it, incentivizing may help. But we'll be gauging that as we get feedback from our, from our campuses.
There were um, students that were interviewed from the truth, when. And um, and they were in support of this and they they talked about even themselves. The distraction, they really pointed out what the, how, how they're distracted, even themselves and how could, they could probably even do better. If not, uh, because um, but the key point for them was the distraction point. And um, um, it was something else that I, that I thought of. Um. I think that uh, that as we become open and uh, and honest with the kids, the kids, they might just. Um, be challenged by it in the, in, you know, like we're saying, we're. Might be one of the, one of the first in the, in the Mexico to implement this. Let's see how it's gonna work. Let's have include that only the, the students in the challenge and say, let's make it work. And what, what part are you gonna, are you gonna play in this, in this um, in this? Cell phone policy, how is it gonna work for all of us? And and have them included in, in it versus. Trying to just implement something on them. And so that's what I thought of. And but going back to what, if we think about how we, how we, I'm a, I'm a baby boomer. And uh, and I remember, I mean, um, my father was an educator and he moved us from uh, from Questa to Taos and. He brought my sister and I and my grandfather and and him, and we built a house in a summer. And I don't remember ever seeing, ever in my life to have it. I used the word bored. And, and we never asked for, um, we never asked for a, a, an allowance. We came to work, I nailed shingles and I brought my dad his bricks, his lumber, whatever. It was the most exciting summer. And I'll never, to me, I treasure that memory because that was. It, like I said, I carry it all my life. I don't know what we're gonna carry from what, what we see on our, on our phones. And I'm gonna say that my phone is in my. Cause that's one thing that I learned, that even having your phone right here is a distraction. Again, that's, I'm gonna start myself and see how, where it goes. And but again, we, we just have to teach our children by example and, and even the other one is just. Start our mornings, don't even open, not even the TV, not the cell phones, nothing. Just enjoy that morning before we send our children off to school and our loved ones off to school and let it be a family time and. And just maybe just change the culture of our, of our community.
President Flores, if I may, just wanna expand on that. Uh. As we regain our instructional days, I do wanna talk about kind of expectations and lead by example. So as we regain our instructional days back, the expectation is, of course, of our teachers to continue making that. Regain of that instructional time, quality time, quality instructional time. So I just wanted to kind of give you back on that one, uh. Secretary to here, because as we regain it, we need to make sure and ensure our students are receiving a quality education. So. That is the expectation of adults as well.
Mm-hmm. The most important part, probably.
Think uh, well, we could discuss this at length. Um. But at the end of the day, I, I think that we really need to, to make a decision as to um. How we can best uh, impact our students' instructional time for the better, better good. Um, is the board comfortable with moving forward with making a decision on this policy? Uh, for against, I, we respect each board member for whatever their decision may be, uh, like with anything. Um, this is something that we can revisit uh, mid-year. Maybe it's not working, we hear back from our administrators, we probably gonna get a lot of public feedback. You know, board members get phone calls, um, see people at the grocery store and say, no, we. Did such a good job, thank you for that, or I don't know what you guys have been thinking, uh, why did you do that? But at the end of the day, you know, our school sites are, is what we control, we set policy, uh, we're here to educate our students. And if this is something that may lead us down a path of higher achievement for our students, um. Sometimes you gotta take those risks.
As long for us, I, I, I would say then if we um, move ahead and approve this policy, I would love to see it. Tried throughout the whole year to get a year's worth of, rather than giving the kids an idea that in the middle of the yard, if they don't like it, they. Spring well enough, loudly enough. It seems like a full year would give us a better read on.
Dr. Lane, I'm gonna defer to you and uh, ask for a recommendation on the adoption of the policy, uh. J I C J student use cell phones and other electronic communication devices.
Uh, President Flores, managing the board, I recommend that the uh, cell phone. J, uh, J one CJ student use a cell phone and electronic communication devices, uh, policy, uh, being as presented.
Would any member of the board like to make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion. To uh, approve, you know. J I C J student use of cell phones and electronic communication device.
I'll second it.
Uh, we have a motion for approval of board member team.
Hello. And uh, President Flores, just to clarify, is that motion um. To, to approve it on first me, um, meeting based on necessity?
Yes. So there is a motion for approval by board member to approve. The adoption of the new board policy, J I C J, uh, out of necessity. Um.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Vice President Cynthia.
Board member Puntia. So are you saying, Monta, that we could have a second meeting on this?
Yes, it's culture, uh, by board policy. And the typical process is, is two meetings of discussion, um, but by policy. The board can uh, adopt at first meeting if determined necessary by the board. Um, and the necessity is the timeline that um, this, this superintendent and administration believes is. Is.
Okay, thank you. I, I will yes for. Board member team.
Yes.
Secretary Trivio?
Yes.
Vice President Spring?
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes. Item H B, this first meeting presentation discussion for possible approval. If determined necessary by board for revisions to board policy, J I C student conduct. Um, that is presented in the board packet, there will be changes. Um. If I could just. If I could just refer to legal counsel real quick, so you can just summarize the changes that were made for the board, so understand me.
Absolutely. President Flores, thank you, members of the board and Dr. Layton. So Dr. Layton, they collaborated with me on the cellphone policy change and asked for some legal guidance and then convention with that, I wanted to make sure that other existing policies that you had did not in any way either conflict or, or somehow needed adjustments in light of the anticipation that this policy might pass. And so I did take a look at J I C. Your current intermissive policy concerning student conduct. And I happened to notice in looking at it, that, that while your district had followed all of the required steps under what is known as the Black Education Act that covers a variety of issues. Not just culture and race, but also issues having to do with, with discipline and equity. And this particular policy did not include that process. And so the language that, the markup that you see does incorporate the language of the Black Education Act, which is codified at twenty-two dash five dash four point three, New Mexico sketch, it's annotated. And it provides for parent, school personnel and student involvement in development of discipline policies and public hearings as well. I was, I just want to acknowledge that Dr. Layton was really pleased when he called me because when he was going through all the steps, they followed. It, it so happened that it also followed that statutory requirement, but I felt like it was important. And it's my recommendation that the board update the policy with these changes to make sure that it isn't happenstance. The other change that I recommended was just because it, it lists the things that the board prohibits. And so I went ahead and drafted some language that lists the cellphone use. So it was just a brief synopsis of that policy. Again, obviously you would only adopt this. After the policy passed, which it just passed, so now, now it's time to look at this one. The last page again is just Black Education Act and making sure that any, any policy on student conduct incorporates those requirements. So my recommendation, President Flores, is that these, these changes be approved by the board. And since the board has already approved this, the cellphone policy, this could go on a second reading, but it seems to be to keep them all together. I would, I would recommend the adopted.
This is presented in the board's packet and just for transparency and public knowledge. So there was some language added, it says, the board shall involve parents, school personnel and students in the development of these policies governing student conduct and discipline. And public hearing shall be held in the formulation of these policies, which the board did conduct today. It also states that students are expected to obey all policies adopted by the board and rules and regulations by the superintendent. It goes forward to, as legal counsel has stated, add students shall not engage in improper behavior, including but not limited to the following, and it adds the use of cell phones and other electronic communication devices during the, during the instructional day. Kind of mirrors the language that was in the initial policy that was adopted. It also goes on just to add some additional language that the authority of the superintendent to establish to establish regulations covering students may be delegated to principals for their individual schools. Provided that parents, school personnel and students are involved in the development of any school discipline policy and a public hearing is held in school prior to its adoption. When an individual school adopts a discipline policy, in addition to the board's school district discipline policy, it shall submit its policy to the board for approval. And just for the record, also, the superintendent's office sent out a comprehensive survey that we had about a thousand respondents on all questions that were asked. So we did seek public input. We also conducted a public hearing today that was noticed as required. So the board has done their diligence. And I just, with the recommendation from legal counsel and also to ask the superintendent for recommendation.
President, I recommend H E is recommended for approval as presented on board policy J I C to include the necessary information based on the prior approval of the policy.
I will go ahead and make a motion with the recommendation from legal counsel and superintendent Layton to approve the revisions to board policy J. And is it higher one?
Higher.
J I C. J I C.
Second.
I have a second for Vice President Cynthia.
Can you tell that would be based on a speech name?
Yes, so the, the motion for approval is based on the necessity being that the school is getting ready to start, we want to implement a new policy. And we went ahead and also approved the new board policy J one CJ, which is called right in line with it. Thank you. So we have a motion in a second.
Board member Puntja?
Yes.
Board member team?
Yes.
Secretary Trivio?
Yes.
Vice President Spring?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. Okay, H C. First meeting, presentation, discussion and possible approval if determined necessary by board of revisions to policy J K student discipline. And if I could also ask for legal counsel for a quick summary on this one?
This will be very brief. I'm not even sure it needed to go to a first reading. But it's kind of student discipline. Again, we were just trying to cross-reference. And the only recommendation that Dr. Layton and I have to policy J K is just simply cross-referencing your new J I C K. So if you look at the bottom, it lists the related policies, such as the dress, corporal punishment, suspension and expulsion. And so we just wanted to make sure that in, in those cross-references, this brand new policy, if you were to adopt it, got cross-referenced. So there's no substantive change to the policy, it's strictly the addition of the cross-reference.
Thank you, Ms. Gago. Superintendent, we have a recommendation.
Board President Charles, I recommend that H C first meeting, presentation, discussion, approval if determined by necessary, that it is necessary for the revisions of board policy J K student discipline as presented.
With the recommendation from legal counsel and the superintendent, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve, being necessary by the board, the revisions to board policy J K.
Second.
Second, Vice President.
Board member Puntja?
Yes.
Board member team?
Yes.
Secretary Trivio?
Yes.
Vice President Spring?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Grandwell, for taking the trip down here to give us legal counsel. We appreciate it. And thank you for the work on the policy. Moving right along is item I presentations, I A teacher housing study, Wilson and Company. Dr. Linger.
Yes, sir. So this is a follow-up from the prior board meeting of the year. Wilson and Company came down and did some process and surveys. So they weren't going to do it originally virtual, but they did make it to Taos, welcome to Taos. And so what they will be doing is summary of what they did on Monday of the, the day after the Monday board meeting to find out what they found at the at their site.
Thank you very much for that support, President. Thank you for having me. My name is Noah Berg and I'm with Wilson and Company. I prepared a short presentation, kind of a valid study we covered. Just go over it very quickly to answer your questions. I'm sure you'll have some questions for me that I would be happy to answer. So like I said, my name's Noah Berg and I'm with Wilson and Company. We're a premier engineering architecture firm based out of Mexico. I am the planning practice lead for the Southwest region and I actually live in San Jose, so I'd like to acknowledge Taos and about that area, so. Excited to potentially look at y'all. So the goals of this study were to look at a site that is about eight acres behind the middle school. And roughly establish the suitability for teacher housing potential. Also, we would be determining what improvements would need to be made to support development of this site for housing. And then looking at the maximization of the developable area for housing while being attentive to the surrounding areas, neighbors and property especially well. And then essentially come up with the costs that would be required for improvements to support housing in this area on the site. So in a study like this, what will we be analyzing? So we'd be looking at deeds and titles and surveys, of course, because those we'll get into a little bit more detail about that. We'll be looking at the topography, floodplains, potentially traffic impacts in the study. We'd be looking at mechanical and electrical components, water and wastewater assessments, potentially environmental assessments, geotechnical evaluations, drainage, of course, and then also zoning and land use assessment and then ultimately costs. So what do we look for in titles and deeds? We're using these to ensure that property ownership and titles to the area and the land. We also look for any restrictions that may have run with the land when it was deeded or when it was given to the district. And then we look for east, and of course, and then any overall any encumbrances that were on the point. Or will we look at the topography? Well, topography is a really big deal. It helps to define what can and can't be built and where it can be built. It also stipulates how the drainage, drainage plan is developed. And it shows overall steep areas which would potentially need fill or cut. We also be looking at the theme of all the maps to determine if there is any floodplain. If there is, that helps with where the building networks will be placed, setbacks from that floodplain. We also do a, we look at the traffic study, which would patterns of the traffic that were being analyzed on the existing roadway networks. The studying adds in the new proposed development, which can be able to determine, determine if there's any onsite or offsite improvements that can be provided to intersection or signalization at the cell, the cell ring. And it also delineates the circulation pattern within the actual subdivision or the actual development, so. We look at the existing mechanical and electric utilities. We have to determine what, if any, extensions would be needed to support the development of housing. And then if any upgrades to the existing systems will be there as well. We look at water and wastewater, this is really important. This determines what existing utilities are available, what level of service they actually provide. Sometimes you have water systems that are outdated or you have pipe sizes that are too small. And then we are able to not determine extensions or upgrades to the water and wastewater and also the costs associated with them. And then also ensures appropriate fire protection service. Environmental assessment would check for environmental cultural features on the area in terms of any mitigation. And of course, the geotechnical assessment is also done. And this examining the soils and the earth to determine what type of soils are there and if they're suitable for. And then finally, we do a drainage analysis. This is a review of the geotechnical data, the topography and floodplain to determine what type of drainage basins will be needed or addition to upgrades. And then what size of the types of drainage basins. That would be required of all drainage. And then, of course, we look at the probably most boring stuff, the zoning and land use. And that's review of plans and documents of the area to determine what regulations might impact the potential sites or the development. And also in this team work with neighbors, there's about a bunch of outreach. You always want to get the neighbors involved with whenever you're putting in housing. I can tell you from my background, it is good to get out ahead of it and speak with the, with the surrounding property owners and neighbors because they may, they may not be in favor of trying to or I'm going to hear them. And then it also helps to determine the placement and quantity, the biggest one, kind of the type of housing. And then it brings, ultimately brings all the data we collected together. And then finally, we come up with costs. So we take all the, all those components of the studies, if there's extensions, drainage and whatnot, and we go ahead and determine a basing schedule, what needs to be done and what order and what the cost of those improvements would be, reach of the different disciplines that we talked about. And then this serves as the recommendations. That, that is my presentation. Second question.
Thank you, Noah. So I appreciate that, Noah. I live in that neighborhood. So I said, do you see all of our properties over by the, the U N M campus? I don't know if, I know I talked to superintendent Layton, I don't know if, if that's in regards to premature land use, if that's, I don't know if that's clear or.
Member, member, to me, one of the things that we're also doing is just to check up what agreement we've had for quite a while. And of course, this is just one of the different properties, but we're also looking to see what other areas are potentials.
President Flores?
Please.
Thank you. Dr. Layton, what do you mean, we're checking out what agreement?
So I believe in decades past, there was an agreement between UNM and the district on how the property was to be used. Specifically towards the University of Creole College. So the land agreement between the two, there may be some restrictions on what or how it can be used. But what we're trying to do is the, the agreement that was done a few decades ago to, and have to go through legal to see if that is indeed the case.
Okay, just for the record, I'm just, I would, thank you for coming and I appreciate what you taught us just now. But I'm surprised too, because I've never heard of this area. And when you say behind the middle school, do you mean east of it, north of it?
Could you pull that slide back somebody?
Yeah, the football field.
I was looking at, I'm sorry, I was looking at something else.
So, yeah, so there's a substantial acreages that are Mr. Hidera. Members of the board, members of the board.
So the area that we had them go out to look at first was the middle school for the feasibility study to see what this kind of venture entails for the district period. The U N M one, I think Dr. Layton kind of laid out why that, that's, we still got to go through legal before we do that. But we also wanted to see what, what is, what is this going to look like for us? Because we, we've looked at a lot of properties that we have. What is this going to look for us in the future if we're going to be bringing in endeavor this big? The middle school property is one of the most open properties, you know. We're also looking at a neighborhood that would be something that teachers might want to live in, close to the youth and family center. The openness of the, the campus at, at the middle school as it's already five eighty-five running right off of it, you're kind of like in the middle of town as opposed to anywhere else that we have until we, we have the UNM property properly assessed by the, by the.
So Marcus, you were. You, are you talking about near where those modular home, modular buildings are now in that area?
To the north of that, yes, the same area. There's an old baseball field.
Yeah, I know.
Which one was it?
That one, yeah, that was.
Right there, right there.
I was just wondering if you could zoom in, if it's possible. I see it okay, but if there's a way, there you go.
So this is already, this is some housing that was already set up. Here, this is a Palomita.
Yes.
There's houses here already.
Yeah.
So this area here, it's quite large, actually. When we went out and looked, we actually bought it. And I think, remember, I think you and I had actually looked at this ourselves.
Yeah.
So this area here already has possibilities for bringing in roadways. That's why the feasibility is, because we can't just say that, because we have to understand if it's even possible. So this area here has a surrounding area that we thought might be really something that we can entice teachers to come. So live with us, work with us, kind of area.
President Flores, one last thing. Sir, first, sir, did you, how, did you find any issues with the town's big drainage digits that go through that property? Is that going to be an issue, do you think?
Members of board, Vice President. I think that we haven't gone into a full assessment of the property yet. We walked the property out there. We've taken a look at the surrounding areas and so I do think that there will be potentially some drainage issues out there, right? Until the study is commenced, you won't really know the severity, what if I cost, did he gave that or? Issues out there, right? Until the study is commenced, you won't really know the severity, what if I caused it, did he gave that or how we could be mitigated. A lot of Asafias and Arroyos are usually not just floodplain, but we have gone into a full flexed floodplain assessment.
If I could just share too.
Thank you.
I'm no expert by any, but there is, your oil runs right here. Yes, so this is the drainage and it goes through there. As we can see, there's also already housing development, you know, that's adjacent to the property. Being the town, because I've already been developed there, the middle school here, the football field there. The housing around there, just from looking at it and not saying I'm for or against, but it doesn't look like it would. Be any immediate concern for potential development.
That I just so you know, the town has told me before that that would be. An issue on that middle screen property, but maybe not for the town or town has told me that at one point.
Again, and that's why the feasibility study first, people, we actually get into the spending a lot of money into any of the properties. That was can be, you know, I, I think that's when you're perfect, you're actually you're kind of enlightening us towards that.
So we're just talking. This is all preliminary, this is, if it's possible, we're not talking any structures. That's way. So I guess, you know, not to Noah, I appreciate you coming up and. It's very thorough. This is my business, so everything when it's scripted is supposed to be, so it looks good. Like I said, it's beautiful sunsets, beautiful area. You're right, oh, right in town. It's quiet up there. Coyotes still cruise up there and other varmints, so help even, so. But yeah, it's just a matter, I guess, us figuring out. Because the golf course area, you know, there's way more homes over there. It's quieter than this a matter of us. Like superintendent Layton said, if we can get the legal figured out, but this is nice for. You know, future expansion, if that's the case, for sure.
So I have a question. Thank you, President Flores. So right now, you're just telling us that you were thinking of doing that study. You haven't done it yet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And Dr. Layton, are you gonna wait till you hear about the legal commute about UNM before you do this one so that we don't?
And correct, so what we're doing is. If this were a case scenario, this is what it would entail. So whether it's another property or different areas. We would have to go through this whole process, but at least you get an indication of what it takes to do something of this nature. Depending upon what property selection is made. And if I may, just to do a quick follow up. We are also meeting with the legal council and the P S F A. So that we can look at possible funding sources, so that we can maximize our dollars.
Right. I have one last question. Would this in any way affect the Vista Grande High School?
That's where we down to the bottom of that.
I know, but it's still part of that, that parcel.
I think it's a different property, if I'm not mistaken, it's a whole different property in itself.
Does it stop there at the Arroyo?
So Vista Grande is not gonna be on this, but. Yeah, so, so Vista Grande is actually in its own section.
I just didn't know if it was.
Was separated when we, when we built Vista Grande, but that time wasn't. Built, it was actually separated for reasons, that's a separate piece of property.
Thank you.
It was the administration.
Appreciate it.
So I, I have a couple of comments just to add to the conversation. Initially, leave. There was discussion of development of the golf course area, at least looking at that property there. I think it's a beautiful area. I mean, who wouldn't wanna live out there? You've got a golf course, you've got beautiful views, it's, it's open, it's quiet. But this property also kind of sits in what is already a residential area. Some extent, it is in close proximity to various other places, you can family center. You know, Walmart's down the road, there's a gas station. I mean, there's some places to eat. So they're not having to travel too far. Also, you know, I never thought of this. Piece of property, but I'm pretty sure that there's town of town sewer, it's real close proximity. There's town or town water, it's in close proximity, I think out at the golf course. You may have to drill a well or obviously excavate and run a couple hundred feet of water from the nearest. Location. I, I think a lot of those homes that are out in the golf course area are on, a lot of them are on the road well. There is a proposition from the town to, to develop a water line down that county road. But it's years out. So we did do a development out at the golf course area, we'd have to drill a well. We'd have to put septic tanks in. Run power, electricity, rushers, and power over here, we know there's electricity is close by, sewers close by, waters close by. It seems like the possibility, aside from getting the zoning. Kind of dialed down, if it is in a floodplain, if it's not, it looks like there's residential zoning all around there. Shouldn't be an issue. I think this is a great opportunity to at least look at.
I, I just wanna make a comment that the infrastructure seems to be in place. And a very accessible versus miles and miles. And, and that's usually the high dog cost of any, of anything.
The town does have a water shakeout there. I mean, there are, it's.
That would be for the, but this would be just very short term versus long term project.
I'm sorry, Sid, you said the town has water, I said the UNM? Yeah, and there is a development. That someone has, has brought out water, that all those lots, we're almost right across from the arborium. And, and maybe we could do a well shirt with you, because I think there's water out there and it's. I mean, obviously, we'll figure this out, but I appreciate it. Now, what you've looked at as president. Mark said, it's, it, there's a lot of land back there. It's kind of just, it's all chalise, I know, it's. All, I said the prairie dogs hang out.
So I have, I guess, questions. What, what would be next steps superintendent Leon or Mr. Burke? Because it's a board intention to try to steamroll ahead with some teacher housing development. I mean, and we don't wanna get. Lost in the weeds or chasing our tail. And we look to the experts. Whoever King's involved with property and mortgages and so forth. But what, how do we continue to keep this ball rolling?
So the next step would be to move us doing the feasibility study so that we can get on out there. Looking at me go for the other property so that we can also possibly do one there. I don't think any of us have an issue with having studies done at both sites or even another site. We just wanted to bring this up to you all to make sure that you understand how much it entails. And that way we can move forward with the next step being, okay, now let's actually do the studies on it, but.
That's something the board would like to do, so I guess.
Or is, no, is, this is all gratis right now?
Yeah, it's, it's all grass right now. If we haven't, yes, we haven't gone much farther than just talking about the study at this, at the site.
When does it, when, at what point do we know about money?
So at the next, we do have a, President Flores and Vice President's break. We do have a meeting again with P S F A to look at where we could allocate funds from. But then at the next board meeting, then we would have to come and present the feasibility costs so that we could present just like an agenda item. So then we could approve and then go from there, start beginning that process.
And by that point, we, President Flores, I'm sorry. By that point, what we have heard from legal about the other parcel? I think we should really, we should consider both. That's my thinking for several reasons, which we could go and do later.
A quick question, Mr. Burke, so part of that feasibility study, obviously, there's gonna. There's a fee for the feasibility study and getting that going. You guys would come back to us and say, in order, this is the cost to develop. Here versus the cost to develop here. So in order to get those costs, we need to do the feasibility study. Because we're not gonna know either way. I mean, we could guess.
Guess what?
We could guess the cost without a feasibility, or we could project it, or you could throw out as a number.
President Flores, if I may, because because this is a presentation, so this would be where, at the next board meeting, we would bring in the cost of the actual feasibility studies. So that we can begin that, that exact process. And part of that process will need to go through legal to ensure that we have all. Proper companies available.
But I hear you, Superintendent Name, so. So there's the cost of the feasibility study, yes, but feasibility study would then tell us as a board and a district. What the cost of the development would be at each site. Yeah.
Potentially. I see what you're saying.
So with that said. Are we, are you just looking at bringing utilities to the site, all the infrastructure rather? Are we talking potential home sites, like this study?
I, so essentially what the study would do is would delineate infrastructure costs potentially. So we would know that there's gonna need to be, that's a gift, we know drainage is gonna have to be done, that's a given. But we're examining all those components so that we have a scope of each of those, right? You have eight feet of fill that's gonna need to be done, because you have a twenty percent slope and you're trying to bring this all to a level, because you're essentially creating a neighborhood, right? A little neighborhood in there. And so the costs associated with it for the costs of development, infrastructure, we're not gonna need the hard costs of us. We scoped that out for the cost of the housing, let's say that we wanted to manufacture a housing. You would be able to delineate how the lots could be potentially or where it would be placed, but it costs to put that on. Or is it a stick build house? Which is stick build construction, that would be in the scope of this study. This is just looking, is it feasible? If it's yes, what does it take to get to? Yes.
I guess, question would the board like to entertain this or direct us from the board?
I like the idea of keep moving forward and let's find out from legal. Yeah, I mean, we, as president. Marcus says, we, we're in a dire need, our metrics are not where they're supposed to be, and that's our job as the board, to bring up the methods. We're judged, that's how every one of us are gonna be judged, you know, how successful our students.
I, I have a challenge to the board. I hope the town and the county don't hear this, but they've been talking about. Workforce housing and housing development for years. If the school district could get out and done before the town and the county, good for us.
Because that's Flores, I had a quick question, maybe for Dr. Layton. You, or actually involving you. A long time ago, months and months ago, we created the board committee to talk about real estate and look at it all. Olifio's on it, I'm on it. Renetta was on it and so on. Shouldn't this be something that, like some of this preliminary discussion, shouldn't that be happening in those committee meetings? And we haven't had one forever. What's happening with that, the board committee for real estate?
What I would recommend as the board representative for that committee, for you to. Meet with superintendent Lee and, and schedule, schedule that. I think we, as, as. As the board, we kind of gotta be the drivers on that and direct staff as needed. He did appoint you to be on that committee. And there's no reason why, you know, we, the board, board member. Can request convening of the committee to discuss these.
I just mean, it might settle some of these questions ahead of time, so. So many here.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be more than happy to, just so you know. Yeah, because it's, it's like you, like President Mark said, we. This is. Home that we need to fill.
All right, I'll talk to Dr. Layton, thank you, because I'm concerned that there hasn't been a meeting with that committee for a long time.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's, there's no issue with two board members being, being there on it, we can't have three. I would get with Dr. Layton, pretend to lay in as soon as possible and then you could.
Perfect.
So I think we'll go, Mr. Burke, I guess next meeting we'll have the feasibility study presentation costs. Thank you, Mr. Edeta, for working on this.
Yeah, sorry, we seem disorganized, but we are right now on this issue. We aren't on everything. Bring your cell phone to the meeting.
And if it does, we do have pouches.
We'll lock you up.
Yeah, we will find it. Mr. Olifio, thank you for also being a driver on this, taking the time, appreciate it.
Good evening.
And we wanna beat the town and the county to housing development. Keep on working on it. Okay, I'm moving right along. Item J, superintendent update, Dr. William Jun.
President Flores, members of the board, just an update that on Friday, two days from now, we will be having our district. Welcome back together as one kickoff at the T C A or Town Center for the Arts. It'll be at one fifteen. At the actual kickoff, we're gonna have reflections from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Campuses will have their individual theme, some are gonna possibly be Hawaiian. I'm rooting for Star Wars, but let's see how that goes. We're also gonna provide a spirit award for the campus with the most spirit. Our cabinet will be judging. To find out which campus has the spirit award, they will, they will hold that honor for all year. And then Johnny, interim athletic director Johnny O'Keefe will be spearheading that spirit award there. We also bring in a motivational speaker by the name of David Edward Garcia. He is a former at-risk student who has now earned his bachelor's degree. He's a former teacher. He's spoken across the country, around the globe, like Brazil, Paris, London. He reaches out for audiences with diverse backgrounds. And he's an author, he's a comedian. He's visited every continent possible, but the idea behind our Together as One Kickoff. Is so that our staff can begin the year rejuvenated and motivated, walk out of there with the, let's do this mentality. As soon as the school year starts. So that's a part of my update and of course, every board member, your invitations will hopefully see you there. It starts at one fifteen.
One fifteen?
Yes, one fifteen.
Oneish, you want it to there one?
And we will, just so, ahead of warning, we will be upstage, on the stage itself, so.
So one P M Friday the ninth at the T C A.
Next, I have cabinet and campus leadership retreat, which goes back to one of the questions that Member Puncher had as well as. The books that are here. So on July twenty-second and twenty-third, our cabinet, consisted of myself. Associate Superintendent Long and Ron, Director of Finance, Director of H R, and our Director of Safety and Security and Operations. We had a retreat at the Task Committee Foundation Headquarters. In that retreat, we reviewed data, we had team building exercises, we reviewed our strategic plan. For Student Achievement Foundation Level One. And from that point, for the last couple of days, we had great pow pows together. But we also set our goals and have achieved them based on our student achievement scores. And so our, our main focus is to help support our school sites and increase our proficiency scores and attendance. So, Member Puncher, I know you were talking about what other things we're doing, several things besides cell phone, this was part of. And so that we can increase our scores on how to get there. And so that was our cabinet retreat. After we established our goals and helped to achieve them, we then had another retreat for our campus leadership, instructional leadership. And in that same meeting, we had again pow pow meetings. We had good team building exercises, but along the strategic plan, we reviewed the data. Each campus is now setting their goal based on district goals to help achieve and increase and improve that student achievement as well as attendance. And one thing that we did learn is how to hold each other accountable, not just about. What we're asking others to do, but it was about what are we going to do to help achieve our campus goals? Again, all centered around a strategic plan, student achievement. So I actually wanted to ask Associate Superintendent. It was from the run to maybe just brief on how those two, when she was the only cabinet member that we didn't do both. So if I may, just a little diversion so that she can see, she can spread her whole reach.
Thank you, Dr. The impressive footage, members of the board. Uh, yes, we did have our retreat for the cabinet and for our school site leaders. It was really nice to see the focus that the the school district and the the site leaderships are having on academics and looking forward to how we can improve our 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 scores for the the school year. Um, it wa- it was really good on our cabinet meeting, there was a lot of team building and getting the cabinet together to really understand what the measures are and what we can do ourselves, um, in those school sites, not just, you know, directing other people to do, it's what we're gonna be doing ourselves. And then for our school site, we are suited that as well. Thank you, and I'll be presenting one day.
Thank you. Sounds great.
President Flores?
Yes, I think there's gonna be, um, um, at four o'clock on tomorrow. Oh, I don't know if it's for all the the classes that you can go and do a walk, you have to find your, uh, your kids' classes and stuff. Is that, is that a part of it now?
That'll be some, yes.
It's an open house?
It's a call it?
It should, it should be a site visit, if I'm not mistaken, and yes. Um. But going along through the report, uh, I want to share with you, and the book that you have in front of you is uh, no expectation of a book report, but we just wanted to let you have a copy so that you can have a relation as to how our district is headed towards achieving goals.
Thank you, I have the board to read it. I'd like to just add something real quick underneath the superintendent's report, just a reminder for the board. Um, we were asked by the, uh, Tausk Chamber of Commerce to be at Tausk Plaza Live tomorrow at six P M, uh, to to introduce our new superintendent, uh, and to also allow each board member, if they can make it, and if they so choose to say a few words, or introduce themselves, or as, or I try to turn the mic over, or however it's gonna work, uh, but just wanted to add that on, uh, so you don't forget. Sorry to take the mic. It's the last. Last Tausk Plaza Live, this is it, so. I I think they're gonna be getting to the school district about six thirty. But we just try to get there real literally, I don't know, parking and walking.
I just wanna say, I really do appreciate your text reminders. That'll really help.
That's good. Okay, I have no problem sexting the board. Uh, you, we've had a good board, and everybody's always present, and does their best to attend in years, I appreciate that. Um, so I guess. So item K, um, his other new business, um, this wasn't presented as a consent agenda, so we're gonna have to go through each of these items individually um, for approval. So item K A, review and possible approval administered the following dates.
One comment on that. Um, Anna, would you mind when I was late getting on Zoom for that meeting, because I couldn't get my Zoom to work, but for any reason, if someone comes in late to a meeting, would you note the time, please, that they're in that slate, that they're, when they get back? Thank you, appreciate it.
So I happened to review the the meeting minutes, I didn't see anything that stood out, they needed to be, uh, pointed out as amendments, I'm not sure if the board had any, um, notices, I know, I appreciate every, I believe this is what just gave the minutes for for these meetings. I wanna thank Mrs. Ray Alfred for freaking the reins in between our meeting minutes. So with that, I'm I'm going to make a motion to approve out of P A, uh, meeting minutes for April seventeen, twenty twenty-four and May second, twenty twenty-four.
Second, President Flores, before, uh, Vice President Spray, was that for April seven? It was for April, and it wasn't you that did it, I was just saying, in general, I prefer to, I'd like to know the time. Okay. Well, you should just note a time when somebody enters the meeting, please, thank you.
Thank you. And maybe if we do, we do wanna note it in the minutes, if you find some time, you can go back and view that meeting, uh, online, and you could probably find the time when she got on there.
I could tell you it was long, it was like twenty-two minutes, so I could get connected from where I was, it was a long time. And also, then if a board member leaves the meeting early, you should also always note that, you probably know that, of course, yeah. Thank you, uh, thank you.
Okay, item K A, so move to approve April seventeenth and May second, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Second?
Second from Vice President Cynthia, I'm pretty popular.
Board member Quancha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trigio?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. And, uh, item K B, Mrs. Chinke, would you be able to just give the board a brief uh, summary of the short business system contract?
Absolutely, President Flores, Vice President Spray, members of the board, Dr. Leyton. Um, this is for contracted services for I T, back in June twenty twenty-three, we went out for R F P. Um, we had a one-year approval for contracted services for short business systems with, uh, one year, uh, with three one-year, um, sorry, with optional three one-year extensions. So how this works, it's, uh, broken down into five domains, the first domain is our networking infrastructure. Our second domain is our end user, um, for hardware and software support. The third is for our telephones, copiers, and cameras. The fourth is for admin support, um, that that includes inventory, meetings, um, that type of stuff. And our fifth domain is for our F T E support. And so this would be considered, uh, year one of the three one-year extensions.
Thank you, Ms. Chinke, any questions from the board?
Doctor Superintendent Dr. Lane, do you have a recommendation, President Flores? Um, I recommend that K V, review and possible approval of shopping systems for the amount of three hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents, approved as presented.
I have a recommendation for approval, would any member of the board like to make motion for approval?
I make a motion for approval of track business system in the amount of three thousand, three hundred, three hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six, sixty-seven, second.
You got a motion for approval for item K D from the board member Quancha, and a second from Vice President Cynthia, uh, vote for the vote, please.
Board member Quancha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trigio?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. Item K?
President Flores, just real quick, I just so appreciate all the information here. You know, the questions that we would ask are all identified on here, I don't thank you so much.
Ask them anyways.
Nobody wants me to be shorter than the council.
Just noted.
I disagree. You gotta get a laugh.
I just, I I just thought that statement to avoid the cabinet violations, yes.
Item K C, review and possible approval of Sundell Staffing LLC Cooperative Agreement, provide one general education teacher services and one special education teacher services for school year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-six cents. Mrs. Brazier.
Board members, um, Superintendent. One of the other contract companies that we've been working with, this one was different, we did use it last year also. We did not go out to R F P on this, we're actually using hubs, R F P. And we went through the process last year, so we're just repeating that same process, and it's a general education teacher and special education teacher, they're both virtual, but they're both highly qualified, and as soon as we get this, and the diversity of background, they're ready to run, so the uh, high school specialized is for reading and English, and the general is for math.
Thank you, Ms. Brazier, does the board have any questions for Ms. Brazier? Or member King?
Let's get him out of Hobson over here.
This one teacher, well, one is actually, um, virtually, she is in Texas. So I couldn't convince her, but there's one that's down in Deming, and his wife is in college, down there becoming nurse and a vet. You went in, come on, so I worked on, we'll see.
We need to name a number.
Okay, one of the things I also asked him is, he's moved around a couple of times virtually, but he's been in New Mexico all alone, and he loves New Mexico. It's like, okay, come on up to the house, and he's come, they come up here all the time to visit. You went in, she can finish.
Let's know, I can get lunch.
I will let them know that.
Uh, thank you for recruiting, okay, if you have any no questions, Superintendent Dr. Lane, do you have a recommendation for item K C?
President Flores, members of the board, uh, I recommend K C, the, uh, approval of Sundell Staffing LLC Cooperative Agreement uh, to provide general ed teacher and specialty teacher as presented.
So move to approve.
Second.
Second from Vice President Cynthia, I'm pretty popular, please.
Board member Quancha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trigio?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. Item K D, review and possible pool of Imagine Learning LLC, amount of one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents. Mrs. Eager.
President Flores, members of the board. Uh, this is to provide support for credit recovery, Tausk Cyber, Tausk Tigers Connect, and English Language Learners. It's an online curriculum of edgenuity, and then, uh, English Language Learners, it's called, uh, Language and Literacy.
Do we have any questions to listen to? I really appreciate that there's, um, a full description of what Imagine Learning provides, uh, that was given to us, um, their sole source. Comprehensive digital education solutions, uh, that great information on here, no questions?
No, I don't, only I don't know if it pertains to this, but it was asked of me. Um, what does, um, what children, what students are, would wanna do the cyber, the Tausk Cyber net type of, uh?
Magnet, cyber magnet school?
Yeah, the cyber magnet school, yes.
That's a class school here.
So Tausk Cyber is a school that is housed here in this building. It is a hybrid model, so they use edgenuity, but they also have online classes, and they have, um, it's a smaller setting, so students get a lot more support. Um, and they have a little more flexibility in some of their attendance.
So, so what, um, kind of a student would be apt to wanting to do that versus a campus type of environment?
I would think it would be a student who would be looking for a smaller setting and a little more flexibility in how they were going to fulfill their credits.
Okay. Thank you.
I like that explanation, I like that explanation, just because and there's that, you know, that stigma, that reference, that it's for like average students or kids who can, you know, hang in a classroom, or, you know, just like the outcast, I've like heard so many different references as to why a student would wanna go there, but, like I said, I like that explanation.
I have, uh, it was one of my friends that has said that her granddaughter was asking her if she could do this, and, uh, and so she asked me, and 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 basically, I I I kind of generally explained to her what my observations have been, uh, cause I've attended the the graduation. And it's really rewarding to see these, these students graduate, and they're just as excited. And then they're able to even walk with the other, with their class, so that is, that is a given. And, um, but I told her, I said, to me, I would think that, that there's something about the the experience of being in in school.
That you may still be in school in the Tausk.
Yes, I know they'll be in school, but the whole other, but again, that was my, that was just my, my opinion to her. And she's, she thought the same thing, but again, we'll see what the young lady decides, but thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Eager, so, uh, no more questions, Superintendent Leyton, you have a recommendation on approval of item K uh, D.
President Flores, members of the board, uh, for K D, uh, recommend approval of Imagine Learning LLC for the amount of one thirty, one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents, as presented by Ms. Eager.
So move to approve, uh, item K D, Imagine Learning LLC in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-one, fifty.
Second.
The second from Vice President Cynthia, it's popular, look.
Board member Quancha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trigio?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes, moving right along, is another item from presentation by Ms. Eager, item K E, uh, review and possible approval of the Howkin Midland Harcourt Reading one eighty and Math one eighty at Tausk Middle School and Tausk High School in the amount of seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
President Flores, I have a question?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for being here with me here. Um, I had a question, whether, is this a new program, or are we changing a math program, or is it, why is this in here, it's just, we need models? We need.
This is another software.
It's another. But it's in, it's in within the same math program that we've been using.
This is the May two intervention, so it is in addition to the core instruction.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any questions, comments? I have a quick question, um, we've been, I've heard a lot about Math one eighty, that's, we've been utilizing that in the district for some time now? And the reading one, Read one eighty also kind of.
So Read one eighty, you have it both for middle school and the high school, and, um, similar to Math one eighty. It is a scripted and subscription online piece, you have some online instruction, and then you have some, some instruction that the teacher is.
Thank you, Ms. Eager, Superintendent. Yes.
Question, thank you, President Flores, when you say some of it's online, that's online in class, not online at all, okay, thank you.
Superintendent Ainsworth, you have a recommendation?
Yeah, President Flores, members of the board, I recommend that K E, approval of soften the hard core, hardcore, read one eighty and Math one eighty at the middle school and high school was the amount of seventy thousand, eight eighty-seven and thirty-five cents, as presented by Ms. Eager.
The board entertained motion for approval? So move to prove.
I could have done.
We get a second. Get a second from Vice President.
Board member Quancha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trigio?
Yeah.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. And before you leave, if I may ask, how is, uh, Ms. Katie doing?
She is getting ready to leave, so she will be for the University of Portland, August twenty-first.
Wish her luck from us, yeah, tell her, send our regards, we're rooting for her.
Thank you, that's that.
Yeah, please do. All right, um, item K F, review and possible pool of unit assets, I believe Ms. Maestas is online. Uh, it's in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and one cent.
Okay, Miss, I have questions again, sorry, this is the last one.
No, please ask questions, Ms. Maestas, in here?
Yes.
Amy, thank you for joining us. Uh, Vice President, do you have a question?
Yes, I do, thank you, President Flores, hi, Tanya.
Hi.
My question is on the second invoice, the one that talks about the, um, uh, onsite assistance with the art artwork that's at the Harwood.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't understand, I don't know who's, has anyone approved this sheet yet, or? Me too, no one's.
Not yet, we, not yet, we've looked at it, and, um, this is what we needed approval from you all from.
Okay. To see if you agree. I'm, um, pardon, I'm sorry, I'm on that committee, and I don't understand how she has this many times that she's visited or been, we haven't had that many committee meetings, we certainly haven't had eight, I think we've had four at the most.
Yes.
So I'm confused about why, what she's charging us for there, she hasn't, all of them.
Um, Vice President Spray, these are quotes that she has given for work that she could possibly do with the district throughout the year, um. We've been in contact with her for a few things, um, she does all, obviously, our assets inventory for the whole district, and then the And then the second one is for the museum. Um, I know that she's been in contact with Juniper on a couple of different things and then she's gonna be with us on live, I believe, the September eleventh board meeting. But these are not set in stone. These are quotes that they could possibly go up to, but not necessarily will it go that far, you know.
Thank you. So then for, have we seen the, when she's sent in actuals, have we been comparing those with the actual committee meetings and how long she's there and so on?
Yes, I mean, we have a committee meeting. Yes, we've been reviewing the invoices that she sends to make sure that she's not over invoicing for, you know, anything that's.
Overlooking those, you are?
Yes.
And will you be at all the meetings?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, that was my question.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Superintendent Lain, recommendations?
President Flores, members of the board, uh, I recommend that K H, excuse me, K F. Uh, approval of dividend assets in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and one penny, uh, as presented by Ms. Maestas.
Would the board entertain a motion for approval?
Some of.
You have a second?
My second.
Motion approved, uh, Vice President Cynthia, second, and Secretary Truill, popular role.
Board Member Quan Chi.
Yes.
Board Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Truill.
Yes.
Vice President Sherry.
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes, um, either comment, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maestas.
Uh, Tanya.
Yes, um.
This is, um, the assets, man, friend, it's, you know, the, the contract that we have, it, it's worked really, really well in, in like with the procurement. It's, it's, you're linking it with the, with the procurement and tagging all your assets so that they can be, um, accounted for.
Yes.
And, uh, so I really like the idea of contracting out because this is such a huge part of our financials. And just, uh, forty-one thousand is just, again, if you would hire somebody just to do assets in-house, that would be a greater expense. So, uh, but I know that it's linked to the finance, it's linked to procurement and if it, if it, uh, I don't know mechanism that you do have to bring that together. How it, how, can you elaborate just a little bit? In the how you, um, have structured the assets uh, management with, uh, with a financials and, and with even procurement? How, how, how does that flow?
Uh, Member Truill, Secretary Truill, I'm sorry, um, so it goes hand in hand with the audit. Um, you know, Sally goes and every time we make purchases, she has access to our visions database. So she will download and view everything that is purchased and then she'll tell us, you know, either this is Miss, um, the account number is wrong, you know, the account string is wrong, you need to code it as this. Um, she has this in, you know, in procurement. She has this very structured, she has, she's very strict with us. She makes sure that we have everything like with our eyes, our tees, our, our tees crossed and eyes dotted. She's very, very good, you know, and she does the full-on report with, um, the auditors as well. Um, in fact, the last report that you guys did for the disposal of all the, you know, the, the like old desk stuff and stuff like that that we can't use, she's in charge of that. She makes sure that we follow the state auditor's roles. So she goes hand in hand with everything, you know, she goes through the database on all purchases and she reviews it every single month and she comes to stay in the office with us two, three days out of a month.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Maestas, again, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
A weird evening, Tanya.
Thank you, you as well.
Thanks. Item K G, uh, presented by Superintendent Dr. Lain, a review of possible pool of Cell Lock. Potted for cell pouches and magnetic detectors and I don't kind of have to prove us.
It, it would be nice, it would be nice, but, uh, having said that, uh, this particular company, uh, Cell Lock, uh, gave us a quote, uh, for twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty. But a part of that quote includes the training and orientation for teachers and staff and students as well as, uh, monitoring evaluation. And so, uh, we were talking about earlier, how are we gonna monitor the data? Are we gonna look at its usage? Uh, this is part of the quote itself. Uh, and if you look at the last page of Cell Lock, right above the synopsis, it also talks about bi-annual serving, so they have it first twice uh, during the counter school year and this is about evaluating the, uh, usage and effectiveness of the pouches getting feedback from the students. So all this is part of the quote. Uh, the company you, we were able to reach that provides cell pouches for both the Cell Lock and Yonder. Now, having said that, uh, Cell Lock came in at twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty for sixteen hundred and fifty units and a hundred detectors. Uh, Yonder did come at, uh, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, uh, for fifteen hundred of the pouches and some additional pouches with some unlocked devices. So as you can see, uh, if we do go with the proposed Cell Lock, Cell Lock, excuse me, uh, we do save about thirty-five thousand dollars, which I'm sure we can find, uh, ways to, uh, save district money. Yes.
Question, uh, Superintendent, uh, so where's Yonder?
Yonder is a nationwide company, I will say that, um, I think.
You know, Los Angeles, California.
But they do service, uh, nationwide company. Uh, there's a lot of states right now that are implementing, uh, uh, laws for the whole state to govern self-one issue, self, self policies. Cell Lock is a company, uh, that actually is a branch of JG Consulting. And so they're also branching one in two seven, uh, but part of this, uh, proposal is also national exposure on how we're doing. So, uh, the data information, how we use it, our implementation will also be going out nationally. So we can, uh, let others around the country know how Taos is doing.
Okay, Superintendent Lain, do you have a recommendation?
Uh, Vice President Flores, members of the board, um, I recommend that K, uh, G, review and possible approval of Cell Lock book or cell pouches and magnetic detectors in the amount of twenty-four thousand, forty-five dollars, uh, is approved as recommended.
Good question, real quick. Um, this is four, twenty-four thousand, four or five here, but I'll be quote here since twenty-four, four fifty.
Okay, that may be a typo, so I'm gonna ask for President, it's, uh, switching of the numbers.
Okay.
Twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Okay, uh, Superintendent Lain, as a recommendation, will member of the board like to make a motion for approval?
So much.
That's second. Well, we have motions from Vice President Cynthia and a second from Secretary Truill, a matter of certain things, popular role.
Board Member Quan Chi.
Yes.
Board Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Truill.
Yes.
Vice President Stray.
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes. Item K H is review and possible approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five contract for childcare component between New Mexico grad system and Taos schools, Mrs. Camille Rivera.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Rivera.
Vice President Flores, President Lain. Uh, I'm here, so I'm not spending money yet. So this is just an approval of, um, New Mexico grads on the grant that they're giving us, so they call it a grant award. Um, they also split it into two, so instructional and of course childcare. So the instructional, they're giving us twenty thousand dollars, which is a ten thousand dollar upgrade from last year. And then for the childcare component, they're giving us eight thousand dollars, which is a four thousand dollar upgrade from last year. Um, of course, this is dependent on numbers, paperwork, database, everything that we turned in last year. They said our program is doing amazing and they wanna continue bringing in kids that had either dropped out or keeping our kids on campus and kind of just keeping them within our school base, having our kids attend our childcare centers. They, they say, they see the importance of giving us that extra money to kind of keep us afloat and keep us going. Their, their biggest thing is sustainability and we, this is their thirty-first year, um, in the state of New Mexico and it's also, I think, Taos is twentieth year or nineteenth year of having grad program around.
Well, I just wanna thank you for, uh, the grads program. I hear a lot of great things about all the work that you do at the high school. Um, thank you for that, Mrs. Rivera. Um, any questions, comments on the board? Uh, Superintendent Lain, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, President Flores, members of the board, I recommend that K H, uh, contract for childcare deployment uh, between New Mexico grads and Taos schools, um, as presented by Ms. Camille Rivera, be approved.
With a member of the board, I can make a motion for approval.
So much.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And a motion for approval from Vice President Cynthia and a second from Secretary Truill, please popular role.
Board Member Quan Chi.
Yes.
Board Member King.
Sure.
Board Member King stepped out for a break.
Okay. Secretary Truill.
Yes.
Vice President Stray.
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes.
And President Flores. I just wanna thank you so much. I love visiting your, I love visiting what you do.
We were so excited when you went to visit us.
It was really, really, really.
President Stray went to go visit us at the daycare last year when we were like upgrading everything.
I loved it.
And it was really nice to see her.
Thank you so much.
You guys are all, everybody should go. We have a new playground now. We put, um, that port in place, so it's like a real squishy flooring in there. So none of our kids get hurt when they're falling off the swings. So it's amazing. The kids love it.
Nice.
Thank you.
President Flores, members of the board, just on a side note, uh, you are also listening to our, will be our M C for the kickoff.
Most of the family.
Thank you for that.
Have fun.
Yes.
I feel we have to run it like our real high school families.
Don't do that.
You guys.
Don't tone it down.
Don't tone it down.
Don't tone it down.
Okay, well, we told Dr. Lain that he has a very light, I'm doing the light of ties.
That'd be perfect. You should do that every day.
And then you guys.
Okay, uh, next is, uh, presentation by Mrs. Renee Mordogon, a review and possible approval of an updated twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar, Ms. Mordogon.
President Flores, members of the board, Dr. Lain, what you have before you is their, um, updated school calendar from one hundred and eighty-two days to one hundred and eighty-three. Uh, we're receiving this now because we were waiting on the approval of the uh, CBA, which happened in June. So now we're, we're updating our calendars. That had been notified that it, it was extended. In fact, uh, this was a good partnership between the union and the district. They reminded us that we did have this additional date. So now we're able to do a professional date, which is gonna be our Friday for staff. Um, the cost to the school district is gonna be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. And that's in the benefits for staff as well.
Say that again, what was the number?
A hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents.
Well, that's good to hear that, uh, we're gonna get professional development because we can, we're gonna have one regular. Sounds good. Okay, Superintendent Lain, do you have a recommendation?
President Flores, members of the board, I recommend that, uh, K I, um, approval of the updated twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar, uh, be approved by, be approved as rec, as recommended by, of course, Superintendent Renee Mordogon.
I'll make a motion for approval of item K I to add an additional day to our calendar in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents for a professional development date.
A second.
We have a second from Board Member Quan Chi. I'm sure, can you please popular role?
Board Member Quan Chi.
Yes.
Secretary Truill.
Yes.
Vice President Stray.
Yes.
President Flores.
Yes, okay, moving right along to item L, the student outcomes, L A, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Taos Middle School District Proficiency Results Presentation. If I could just make a quick comment, this is a new addition to our agenda which allows the board and the district to focus solely on student outcomes and achievement. And I'm real happy to commend our superintendent for adding this and Ms. Mordogon for being here to present, um, this item. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Mordogon.
Thank you, President Flores, members of the board, Dr. Lain. Um, I would, thank you for adding to item two of the board agenda. It's, you know, important for the school district that we're looking at our academic scores and ensuring that we're moving forward and we'll be achieving with our students. Uh, our first slide here is our state assessment scores and graduation rates are unfortunately still embargoed by New Mexico P E D. So we haven't received, um, our official, um, scores that we can release to the public. But the school district is able to take a look at the scores, um, as site administrators and as our superintendent um, shared with you in our cabinet meeting so that we can look at it as a district and start planning for ourselves. Once it is, um, embargoed, usually we're sharing that with you as the board, uh, where we're rated as a school district and where our, um, school sites have been rated as well. I would like to highlight that, um, we do have one of our school district, or school, um, district elementaries that is a spotlight school, which, you know, is, is a feather in our hat, I think, because we have a Nazi charter who has always been one of the top performers and is a spotlight school. So now we have one of our own elementaries that is a spotlight school as well. So what you see here first, um, because our scores are embargoed, what we are sharing with you is, uh, breakdown by grade level of where our students are performing. Uh, we have our reading proficiency, um, which is at or above proficiency. At grade three, we have thirty-two percent. Uh, grade four is forty-six, grade five is fifty-one, grade six is fifty, and grade seven is fifty-two and grade eight is forty-three percent. Um, our high school scores are a little more challenging to unpack because we are looking at our S A T scores and those are also based on just, uh, one certain grade level and it doesn't encompass all of our school sites. What we are going to be doing this year and as Dr. Lain shared with you, we met with our site administrators, since they're going to be using our short second list to be looking at their baseline data so that they can, um, really, uh, dig deep into their, their improvement uh, or goals that they're gonna set for their school sites.
Quick question, real quick, uh, Ms. Mordogon, you said at or above, so is that thirty-two percent? Is that the straight percentage or is that above percentage?
So it, how our scores are broken down by the NAMASA is you're either, um, proficient or you're above proficiency. So proficient would be at grade level and then we have above grade level. And so these reflect students who are at grade level and above grade level. And what I will say with our reading proficiency scores is what we've seen is that uh, New Mexico P E D does support literacy. We do see an improvement and it's reflected in these scores here. We're storing at the fifty percent had for our students. I wanna say that our new curriculum has also had, um, some support in this as well because it really does, um, focus on the different elements of the NAMASA assessment and the standards that the students need to master for their grade level. What we did, take a look at as a cabinet team and, you know, this, I think it broke it down a little bit, uh, more for our staff and is more manageable for everybody is to understand how many students we need to move from non-proficient into that proficiency. And what we, what we looked at with, uh, Dr. Lain is that a minimum is, the, the bare minimum is five students. If we take five students from each grade level, we can move our scores up five percent. So as a district, that's what we presented to our, our site team administrators and they were able to say this is something that's easy to grasp. We can do this. It's, it's not a big, you know, ask of anybody. Um, so that's what we were looking at is that if we just move five, we're gonna move up five percent in our proficiency scores. With that proficiency, as you know, we've shared this before, we saw our New Mexico V S A S scores last year, um, we're still not meeting our goals of where we would like to be. It was a real eye opener for a lot of our school sites and for administrators as well to really dig deep into the data and see where we're storing. But there were really great conversations of, you know, identifying where areas of growth could be for each of the school sites and how we can support them as a school district. And that's what Dr. Lain has asked us to do is how can we provide additional resources? Or barriers for our staff? And that's, you know, the conversations that we were having. What we did look for again is to move them up. It's five students that we, that we can move them to move up our scores to, uh, five percent. Again, this is the minimum. It's not, we're not aiming for five, we're aiming above five, but this is just the minimum that we, we had taken a look at. I do wanna say if these were preliminary scores and for the New Mexico V S A S, it probably will change because of how they're going to calculate all of our scores together, but this is just preliminary data. So you can kind of start getting an idea of where we're starting to plan from and we will adjust as we do get those scores out. Nadia, can you move to the next one? So talking at the cabinet and our site team administrators, we keep moving with our wildly important goals and if you. We came up with our wildly important goals. And if you look in your books, these. These are, are what we talked about during cabinet meeting. You know, what are, is our wildly important goal? Uh, we met on the twenty-second and twenty-third and, you know, I think it was really great that we had that time to build the team. And have these discussions as the different departments that you're a part of this as well. If you're operations, finance, H R, uh, I T, you're all a part of this conversation of how we're going to improve our student. And what we're gonna do, how we're gonna grow them. So our first uh, wildly important goal, one is going to be increase our E L A proficiency from forty-five percent to fifty percent. And that was as a district as a whole. And then our second goal was increase our math proficiency from twenty-three percent to twenty-eight percent. Uh, we will be working on attendance as soon as we receive some data from N M P E D. As of right now, we don't even have preliminary data on our attendance just yet. Our school site administrators, Maria, sorry. On the twenty-ninth, they meant to meet uh, to establish their week goals for each of their school sites. So we have our overall district week goal, but then we're also going to have each of our school sites have their own. And they set those on that day with um, Dr. Layton and myself. Next call or sign? So how we're going to achieve our week is by our lead measures. And these are something new to wrap your head around. And I, I encourage you to read the book. Because it's some new ideas on how we are each going to do this. And it really falls in line with our ninety-day plan. That's been a conversation we've had with our school sites is what are you going to do? Not what are we gonna tell our kids to do or our parents to do? It's what each of us are going to do and commit to do. So your lead measure is predictive, it's influenceable. Each department of our um, of our cabinet came up with some lead measures. So for example, I T is going to make a commitment that each week, it's not just, you know, a one and done. It's each week she's committing to meet with our teachers. And go over software that they should, they're implementing in their classrooms and see what effect it has or how she can help support it. And then her accountability is coming back to cabinet. And sharing with how many did she meet with and did she meet that lead um, measure that she had set for herself? For myself, it's classroom walkthroughs to see um, what our implementation of the math and the reading curriculum is. And so I'll come back to cabinet and let them know how I did. Operations had to do that as well. So what are theirs was um, going in and seeing, you know, how hot and cold the classrooms are and having a discussion with the students. Because that does affect how they're, how they're performing in their classroom. So each one of the departments have to do that. And then as well did our school site um, administrators. We both with that as well. Next one. So we have a compelling scoreboard that each school site has to come up with. It will have our own, ours is all digital. And uh, we're, we're very competitive, we found with our cabinet team. Uh, Dr. Layton and I are, are winners of our team challenges. So we're, we're gonna keep that. We have the trophy. Uh, that was awarded to us for it. Maria, Mr. Tech will uh, be working on that.
I'm silencing this part on the, on our YouTube video. When I post it.
So uh, our scoreboard is how we're gonna keep each other accountable. And each of our school sites have already come up with some examples for you to see of how they're going to keep themselves accountable. Um, I'd like to point out, um, Dr. Layton and I had this conversation this afternoon. Enos Garcia's accountability is they are tracking it and it's, it's hard to see right now. But they are tracking uh, weekly how they're meeting their uh, lead measure for, for their school site. And then Dr. Layton will be meeting with them and, you know, go talking and discussing with them how it's going. And holding them accountable as well. So it's, it's an accountability, but they're all coming up with how they. See that they can make a difference at their school sites to help achieve our way. With that, I stand for question.
Wow.
I just had one question. Thank you, Vice President Flores. Hi, Renata, um. So do you have any idea what month those Vista reports come out? I can't remember, last year?
They should be, well, we were told they were supposed to come out in July, at the end of July. Uh, we're hearing right now that they should be coming out mid-August.
Oh, so soon, okay.
Yeah, it should be coming out soon. We do have our attendance reports that are due at the end of August. So I'm expecting them to come out um, by, so. If not by our next school board meeting, we can have it by the first meeting in September.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a quick question. You may have touched on it. In regards to increasing our math percentages, what do we plan on doing? Or how do we plan on hoping that to uh, increase the proficiency in math?
President Flores, that's a really good question. Thank you for asking that. Uh, Dr. Layton will set aside funding. So that we can bring in some interventionists into our school site. We did find that that worked well for E L A. And so now um, we're bringing that in for math. Uh, we just interviewed for, I want to say our elementary uh, interventionist today. And hopefully we'll have that hired fairly quickly. We're still looking for a secondary math interventionist to come into school site. We also have Math one eighty. We're also looking at some additional uh, professional development for our staff. And we're looking at ten or two plans for that as well. So we're gonna take the approach of, you know, some of what we did for E L A and put that into our map.
I definitely force the improvements on that. I think it's a great approach. And thank you, Dr. Layton and Miss Moda Bon for highlighting that. It's always been for improvement and, you know, it's good to highlight, we're doing good, but in order to continue to do good, we need to look at.
Exactly.
And not be, and not be afraid of it.
Be afraid of it. Lean into it. We're leaning in.
President Flores, about May, you know, uh, such chapters, you should retreat. Uh, they were looking at their data and then, when they saw their data, they, they had that, it was like, oh my gosh. But, but we mentioned, this is not meant to be judgmental. This is so we know what our starting point is and how we're gonna achieve those. And so it was an eye opener, but it was also refreshing to see that our campus site leaders are finding ways. To make those improvements. And that's our high school and if you want.
Oh, right, our high school looking at their data because they, they saw that they only have for a certain uh, group of student. They made the decision as a, as a site to um, commit to having a date for their short cycle assessment. So we have a set aside Friday that all students are going to be um, taking their short cycle assessment. So they do have that baseline data. So that was, you know, I think it's a huge movement for us um, for the district to have. That type of data, especially for our secondary students.
And this came from them. So this is not something that was from the top down, but ownership from the campus administration.
Awesome. Lot of good news to hear. Any questions, comments from the board?
Thank you. Just a great job. I mean, I haven't. I wasn't on, I'm a new member, but um, in the previous meetings that I attended up to. Um, my opponent, I haven't seen anything that would be like this, but what you're presenting and everything that's. Already come into place before the school years even started. So it's really impressive to see the changes and the movements happening. So thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, actually, you know, it's, we as a board, we sit up here and uh, um. You know, it's not always easy to make the decisions that we make, but uh, to have the. The staff with the boots on the ground, you know, you all do the work. Um. You know, a lot of times, I'm sure staff, I think, you know, they don't know, but they think I'm for them. But uh, um, we, uh, been on the board as long as I sat, you know, it's uh. One can't truly. You can, I, I don't know how to say this, but it, it, the acknowledgement of the work that staff does uh, is never. Truly acknowledged. And I, I think we need to find ways also, Dr. Layton, to make sure that we are acknowledging and appreciating staff. Every chance that we can get. And it's very important to uh, work on keeping morale high. And uh, appreciating our, our staff and administrators.
I appreciate that, uh, President Flores. And I know we're getting a little on the late, but a little bit of a sneak peek. Um, there's some couple of things that we're gonna be coming down at the next board meetings. And we will be highlighting uh, campuses with the highest student attendance. And we will be highlighting campuses with the highest staff attendance. That's one. The other one, I just uh, enlisted the, the help of uh, Ms. Jintet. We are creating a staff appreciation calendar on a monthly basis so that we can highlight each and every member of our staff. From the top, the whole, which is the bottom, all the work that they do. And we need, promoting that on our social media, websites. Because just like our team says, together is one, we all take a part of this. And so we're gonna be doing that. So a little sneak peek of what to expect in the next few board meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Moda Bon. We appreciate your time and all you work.
Yes.
Thank you for the, your dedication to our district. It's great to see you.
Yeah, might I ask you a couple of quick questions?
Actually, since it's the overall agenda.
It's, it, it's just questions about um. If you don't, if you can't do it, that's fine. Questions about New Mexico Vista's and uh, a couple of others.
You know, offline, I'm sure you could uh, ask the superintendent um, and uh, scan. More than walk through. Or save it for public comment at our next meeting. Thank you, sir. Um. Okay, moving right along, um, item A is executive session. We will be entering the executive session. You know, you don't have anything under executive session that we just. Item N, um, upcoming Tausman School Board Meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for August twenty-first. Of this year, twenty twenty-four, uh, is scheduled to be at six o'clock P M here at the administration building. Um, item O is future topics. And this is an item where the board. If they would like to request um, any additional agenda items, um, now would be the good, a good time to do it.
Do you want to guess? President Flores, you want to guess what I'm gonna ask for?
No.
You can guess it. It's when we, could we set a date at some point with Elena for her to finish her retreat?
Yes.
I want to ask.
Well, what we could do is, is um.
Thank you.
Maybe not, you could not exactly make that a future topic, but we could uh, direct Superintendent Layton to uh, check. With Miss Elena's calendar, um, to see when she, her and the board could convene. To do a board retreat, uh, with some board training.
Appreciate it.
And actually, I think it was something where. Social super tip, I, uh, Bautro said about the sale, the summary of what, you know, they were selling uh. Some old uh, equipment and stuff. What was that meant?
They haven't done it yet. Auctions? Originally, it was June first, then it was August thirteenth. What is it now?
I'll get that up before you.
Okay, thank you. It's just been postponed and postponed.
A couple of things, President Flores, um, for that upcoming meeting, um. It's right around our cultural activities at Tauspueblo, so I may not be in attendance to that August twenty-first meeting. And then um, not necessarily for the agenda, but mostly for myself, if there's any other board members. If we could possibly get a calendar of the twenty twenty-five or any future board meetings. Um, possible trainings, retreats, anything like that, just because I have such a busy schedule with my job. And my boss would like to see that, um, something in writing of when I'm gonna be miss, I might potentially be missing work.
So, so there is a board calendar of our meetings, um, Superintendent, can you? Uh, or Miss Rial, uh, through Superintendent, send the board um, a digital. Email with the copy of our board calendar. And then I guess any foreseeable trainings or meetings? Miss Jintet?
And I, uh, for the board calendars, it's, will also be in your events. And then uh, I will make sure it's on the school board um, page as well.
Okay.
It's already on the events. Thank you.
Secretary Truheel?
Um, in November, this sixth, uh, we're having a, a board meeting, but I'm gonna be in Madison. And I was just wondering, maybe we could move it to the, if if, and maybe if possible, if not, I won't be.
Okay, well, we have enough time to make that change if needed. So could we make a note to possibly uh. See what date would work for the board, um.
November.
To maybe change the meeting from November sixth to another date? Well, I, I do have, um. Uh, item I'd like to entertain be placed on one of our future meetings for this next month. I could speak with, for the board to be aware. I spoke with our, our auditor, Mrs. Uh, Aramio uh, today. And she does have a couple of updates on the special audit that she would like to advise the board. Um, as to where it's at right now and kind of what movement has taken place. Uh, so if possible, if we could find a meeting that is not too lengthy. To include an executive session or a special audit update. Yes.
The November sixth meeting is at the Pueblo, so it might involve, if we change it, we need to involve them too.
And it's okay if, if um, if I'm not here, maybe I can do a Zoom or a telecon thing or something. Because um, I'll, I'll be traveling on that day, but I should be at my destination by, by the evening. So I can, I'll, we need to, uh, instead of tomorrow, somehow. So instead of having to change it and, and especially because it's gonna be at the Pueblo. I, I mean, it's not.
We still have enough time for any meeting, we'll see.
Besides Zoom doesn't work.
So President Mark, uh, we got an email in regards to Brian Cologne. That uh, where he presented at the law conference. He wants to present to us. If, if it's available, if we can put on the agenda for the twenty. He's probably said, what is it, about half hour, forty-five minutes, guys? I think he can, he said he can summarize about that much, maybe even half hours. So he sent it, he sent you a copy, my superintendent Layton, also Anna, you got that. So you just. Uh, people like to come and talk to the board so we can consider joining uh, this uh.
We're joining the director for next board, it's your turn.
Yeah.
Um, there. Vice President Cynthia had actually made a request, and I don't know if we're gonna meet that timeline, but. Uh, the School Board Association asked for some board resolutions. Um. I'm not sure the dates that's due. The ninth of, that's next month?
Just, that's six on my head, it could be not.
If the board has, um. Any idea of any kind of resolutions, and what that is, is kind of um. Something that they take to the legislature to entertain and to like. Passing as law, um, something that we could support. I'm not sure between now and the ninth. And I would say that we need sooner than later that if you could include me in any. Um, possible resolution ideas that we could present to Superintendent Layton. So we could get that put into legal format, um, to be presented to the legislature. Um, one thing that I've had on my agenda and it's, I don't, you know. I'm not gonna set a sunset on my board term, but I do uh, have next year being the. End of my third term, something that I think all board members would appreciate is I think we need to approach the legislature. On a paying frequency for board members. Um, as you can see, uh, we do spend a lot of time here. Um, at our meetings and not only at meetings, but through the week. Uh, town council members get a fairly decent stipend. I'm not asking for, you know, anything large. But I think we should maybe entertain that idea. Um, and if it's.
I actually brought that, I actually brought it up at the, at this last conference to several. And to everyone that I, I talked to was in agreement. And but again, it has to. Um, I believe that there is uh, the attorney that uh, well, I can't remember what his name was. That we need to talk to him and maybe he can, the lobby, is he the lobbyist? Or the.
Senator, Senator?
The Senator.
Yeah.
And I think.
His last name is Solas.
Oh, yes, him. So, yes, him.
So with the board's consensus, what I could do is I could work with Superintendent Lee in. And um I think if the language is pretty simple and straightforward, just uh a revisiting of board member. Uh, pay uh throughout the state. Um, and it's just, it's just a straight, simple resolution that could be introduced. I did bring it up also to Senator Gonzalez and Representative Ortiz. Um, at one of the um meetings they had. Um, but you know, unless we bring it forward in an actual resolution that the School Board Association supports. I don't think it'll get any traction, so maybe we could work on that, and if you have any other ideas.
Okay, it's a great idea.
And the point, um, my thoughts uh are that we oversee a thirty-million-dollar budget. We have, I can, the county, the commission not gets a salary plus benefits. The town, the town council gets out a salary, as plus benefits. It's not a huge salary, but but there's a benefit package to it too. So to me, I think that we're, I mean, the the decisions that we make, the the level of responsibility that we make, that we have. Is is even greater. I'm saying it's greater because I've dealt with.
That's due to education and our students.
You know, and this is huge, right? So.
I fully agree with that.
We'll have to.
I think we should be very specific, I think we should say equivalent to county commissioner or town council. If we leave it uh not specific.
Yeah.
It's just gonna just kind of peter out, so we want to be very specific, I mean, that's where council comes in. Um, to just be, you know, with that said, I think we also next uh uh meeting, the agenda about the. Uh, advisory board for U N L, we need to change that date and not have the same day of our board meeting, and we get compensated for that.
Yeah, for this.
Cause it's an hour, we need to, you know, it's only fair to us in our time, so we do it Tuesday or Thursday. So we let chancellor know that we're gonna change it now, so let's, we gotta obviously approve it as a board and say this is how we're gonna do it now. Because I I think it's a, it's wearing out the welcome. And you know, we we all have time, I mean, or when we're conscious that Keith had four board meetings today. And so, you know, we're all committed to this community, that's why we're here. But yeah, I mean, I know it's in the past, it's been done that way, but it's like.
We can change it.
Yeah.
Are you, are we not getting paid for you on them board meetings?
No, cause there, if we have well, meetings that are on the same day, um, we we'll only get compensated for.
We only get a stipend for.
Stipend for that.
For what?
For that day, for that, those meetings. So I guess what we could do is visit with people, and I think we did talk to people about it, let's see the right way to go about it.
Yeah, I think she shared with you, like you just said, it was the same day, if we move it, then it's not the same day.
Okay, it's something to discuss, I'll discuss it with Superintendent Lee.
Cause I think that from U N's perspective, they do it on that day to make it easier for all of us. Because she was waiting to do her schedule, so we did ours, so she's probably trying to help us the other.
I think it's a good discussion to have, um.
If you want me to help to talk with you about that resolution, it's a great idea, great resolution, if you want to brainstorm it or.
Yeah, why don't we consider one meeting with Superintendent Lee and um.
I'd love to, that's a great idea.
I think thirty next week will give us some time.
It's a great idea, long overdue, probably.
All right, um, been a good meeting, uh, I think everybody was ready to go home.
Yeah, we got on our own.
At nine o'clock.
Item, item P is adjournment, there's so much adjourned.
Second.
Got a second, Vice President Cynthia, but first we call the role.
President Puntja?
Yes.
Working the team?
Yes.
Secretary Teo? Yes, Vice President Sprake?
Yeah.
President Puntja?
Yes, and I'll send out a text again tomorrow, we have that uh, so it's a line, you guys can make it.